Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, January 30th, 2023. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Atten.
Here.
Councilmember Schorder.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end of the dais, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, who's on my left at the other end of the dais. We also have a number of staff, department heads, and guests who will be participating in the meeting and will be introduced as various items come up on the agenda. We would ask folks, if you've got a cellphone, to make sure and either silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. And do we have anybody participating remotely, Mr. Trudgeon?
Let me double-check. We did have some people sign up, and we do, yes, we do have two attendees.
All right. Just want to let folks know who are participating remotely via Zoom that at the various points in the meeting where we open up for public comment, if you want to participate at that point in the meeting, either with a question or a comment, the appropriate thing to do in Zoom would be just to use the raise-your-hand feature and let us know, and then we can bring you into the meeting. It is your option to choose your, to use your camera or not, but we certainly do need the audio part so that we can hear what you have to say. But it is not required that you have your camera on for your participation as long as we have a chance to hear what you have to say. With that, then, we'll ask folks to stand if they're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on tonight's agenda is approval of the agenda. And first, as we always do, I'll check with the city manager, Trudgeon, are there any staff requested changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove 7E. That's considered a Google payoff interfund loan between the PNP shopping and shopping center funds with use of excess cash reserve funds. We could pull that off for a future conversation in March. Once we have the books closed officially, we'll have a better sense of all the balances, and our recommendation may change as part of that. So it was a little premature to bring it forward at this point, so my apologies, but we'll bring that forward most likely one of the meetings in March.
All right. Noted. Are there any changes requested by members of the council or council member requested items to remove from consent this evening? Councilmember Strawn?
I'd like to remove 10E, F, and G, given the community concerns, so that they have an opportunity to comment.
All right. We will then take up items 10E, F, and G earlier in the agenda, either under Section 6, which will be shortly here, so that folks who may wish to come in or ask questions can do so without having to wait to the end of the meeting. Are there any other changes requested by council members? Is there anyone here from the public on any of the remaining items in Section 10 on the back page or second page of our agenda? This would be approved payments, a temporary liquor license, and a temporary gambling license, general purchases approval, or grant application update. Anyone here for any of those items this evening? All right. Any hands raised in the remote participants on any of those items, wanting to participate in those items this evening?
There is none.
All right. We'll just give one more chance to the remote participants. If there is anyone here for an item in Section 10 of our agenda, on the second page, 10A through D at this point, if you're here for one of those items, please, if you're participating remotely, use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom to let us know, so that we can take up that item earlier in the meeting. As you may have noted, we did move items 10E through G already to earlier in the meeting. Do we have any hands raised, Mr. Trudgeon?
We do not.
Okay. I believe, then, we can entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Atten, to approve the agenda. Is there any additional discussion on that motion? Right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, so we have our agenda for this evening. Let me catch up here on the timing here. All right. Next on our agenda, then, is general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda, but may be of interest to people in the public or related to city business, but once again, not on this evening's agenda. As I noted earlier, we will have an opportunity for members of the public to speak to agenda items as they come up, but we do also want to have an opportunity at the start of each meeting for folks to speak on general topics of either interest to people in the city or, once again, related to city business. If you're participating remotely and are here for general comment, this would be the time to let us know and by raising your hand in Zoom. Otherwise, if anyone is here from the public to speak at general comment, not related to agenda items this evening, we have the microphones at the table, and you would be asked to come up and speak at the table. And we've just asked, and this will apply to any public comment as the evening goes on, that you begin your comments with your name and ad, name and address, or name and street, if you prefer, and direct your comments or questions to the city council. And then we have a two, a three-minute time limit per speaker. And once you're done with your comments, if you have a name that might not be naturally known how to spell, you can just step off to the side, and there's a clipboard there that you can just spell your name out for the official record. Once again, this is general comment, not related to specific agenda items this evening. Is there anyone here for general comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Take a seat.
Feel free to have a seat.
Yep.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Peter Christ, and I serve as the lead pastor at Prince of Peace Lutheran Church here in Roseville, 2561 Victoria Street North. My last name, believe it or not, is spelled C-H-R-I-S-T. I am here to just introduce myself primarily and, and have you put a face to my name and the name of our congregation in the church. But I'm primarily here to commend you all for the, the vision and the foresight that the city of Roseville has taken relative through its police department to provide this city with a homeless liaison. And Carrie McCullar is her name. Hopefully, you're familiar with the work that she does on your behalf, on all of our behalf, to help care for our neighbors. Our church has been experiencing the change of the, the changing dynamics of this neighborhood and, and the needs of our neighbors. And our parking lot has been playing host to the rising population of homeless in our midst. And there are very few nights when there isn't somebody spending the night in our parking lot. And, and we, as a church, have been wrestling with how to, to, to be helpful with that question. And so Carrie's work with the city of Roseville Police Department has been invaluable. She's just been a fantastic resource to us and to, to us in this process. Earlier this year, in, in our relationship with Carrie, as it's developed, she asked us to help the city, the police department in particular, as they were trying to tend to a matter of homelessness, this matter of growing matter of homelessness in our midst. And she asked us to provide shelter for a place for, for someone with their RV to come and, and take advantage and use our parking lot. And that has led to just a really rewarding relationship in the process and has really opened up the eyes of our congregation to the needs of this community. And, and so it has put us on a journey that we're, we're slowly discovering. I'm here to invite you to come over to Prince of Peace to come, we're not very far away, just opposite the park here, and come over and, and see what is transpiring. We are continuing to provide shelter to, to the, the woman who came with her RV this summer, but we've upgraded the quality of her RV significantly. And we have surrounded her with a community of support, which is central to helping someone coming out of chronic homelessness. There's so much to be learned and so much to be shared, and I'm not going to take your time tonight about that. But I would like to invite you all and know that that'll, this will be followed up with a formal invitation to, we're going to try and host an event that maybe would be appropriate for you to come and experience what, what is taking place and transpiring over there. And, but if you're curious and want to know more, please reach out. I, I am not very hard to find, and I'm just down the street. And, and the congregation welcomes you eagerly to come over and experience what, what is happening over there. We're, we're not sure where this journey is headed, but we know that it's an important one to be on. The, the, the growing needs of homelessness in our midst and the severe lack of deeply affordable housing in this community in particular is troubling. And for, we obviously feel a calling in, in our sense of our understanding of, our call to faith and our, our response to, to the love that we experience from, from God. And so we want to wonder together with you how best to live out that calling and to how best serve this community as, as good partners and good neighbors to one another. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work that you're all doing.
Do I need to fill?
I think we're good.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Is there anyone else here this evening for general public comment? All right. Any hands raised, Mr. Trudgeon?
There is none.
All right. Then we'll close the opportunity for general comment, and we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. Next on our agenda, we have a couple of recognitions and donations in, actually, in the form of proclamations this evening. And so the order of business will be to read the proclamation, and then a motion to approve would be in order. The first proclamation relates to Black History Month in Roseville and reads as follows: Whereas the city of Roseville is committed to recognizing and honoring the contributions of all members of our communities, and whereas Negro History Week was established in 1926 by Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson as a way to neutralize the deliberate distortion of Black history, and whereas this movement grew over the years to Black History Month to give an objective and scholarly balance in American and world history, and whereas the month of February was selected as Black History Month because it may, it marks the birth of Frederick Douglass, W.E.B. Du Bois, Langston Hughes, and Abraham Lincoln, all leaders whose actions greatly impacted the lives of Black Americans, and whereas the contributions African-Americans made to and continue to make in, in building our nation's infrastructure and economic strength, as well as our history, music, arts, national defense, from the Revolutionary War to present-day military operations, as well as written words and discoveries and inventions are often overlooked, and whereas on January 1st, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation set the United States on the path of ending slavery, and on August 28th, 1863, hundreds of thousands of Americans of, excuse me, 1963, hundreds of thousands of Americans of all backgrounds joined in the march on Washington, which was led by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, as well as James Framer, the Congress of Racial Equality, John Lewis, Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, A. Philip Randolph, Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters Roy Wilkins, a local person, by the way, National Association for Advancement of Colored People, Whitney Young Jr., National Urban League, in pursuit of jobs, justice, freedom at the memorial for Abraham Lincoln in Washington, DC, who was the author of the Emancipation Proclamation, once again, in pursuit of freedom and equality for all. And whereas, despite all the progress, the legacy of slavery and segregation still persists in our nation in the forms of mass incarceration, the school-to-prison pipeline, racial profiling, educational inequalities, and housing and employment discrimination, racism, and bias, and whereas in 2023, Black History Month honors the theme Black Resistance, commemorating a journey to equality that we continue to pursue, and whereas the city of Roseville invites all members of the community to renew their commitment to inclusion, racial equality, justice, creating a community where all belong, and to participate in the activities designed to advance the cause of freedom and equality for all. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Roseville hereby declare February 2023 to be Black, Black History Month in the city of Roseville. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
By Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting that proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. That proclamation is adopted. The second proclamation we have this evening relates to Optimist Day and reads as follows: Whereas the Roseville Optimists Club was chartered in January of 2017 and has a six-year track record, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club's mission is to bring out the best in our youth community and ourselves, excuse me, our youth, our community and ourselves by providing hope and positive vision, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club has grown to be a highly successful community organization numbering over 100 members and provides a number of programs and projects to fulfill its mission, and whereas the Roseville Optimists Club has initiated two important long-term programs, the Character Education and Development Initiative and the Civic Education and Engagement Program, and whereas Roseville's Optimists Club's vision is to continue to grow in size, service, and stature, and whereas the first Thursday of February is recognized and celebrated as Optimist Day in the Optimists International Organization of over 2,000 local clubs, therefore be it resolved, the city of Roseville hereby declared February 2nd, 2023 to be Optimist Day in the city of Roseville.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Atten. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved, and we thank the optimists for the good work they do in our community. That then brings us to items removed from the consent agenda. And as was noted, we did remove items 10E, F, and G, which all relate to short-term rental licenses from the consent agenda for separate consideration at this time. I believe I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgeon to introduce this, these three items. We might as well kind of take them somewhat together, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, we have in front of you three short-term rental licenses. One is for 1901 Ryan Avenue, another one is for 395 Woodhill Drive, and finally, the last one is for 770 Heinele Drive. All three of these properties have submitted an application and paid the appropriate fees. Would also mention that with each of these properties, we did check for any complaints against the property, both on the community development side and the police side, and there's been none in the last five years. That would impact the ability for this license to be issued. So our recommendation is to issue these licenses as stated in the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. We'll begin as we always do. Are there any questions from the council for staff on any of these items? Questions for staff? All right. If there's no questions for staff, then we can open up for public comment. And once again, the, the rules of the road for public comment are, as I described earlier, we've got a three-minute time limit per speaker. We would ask that you begin your comments with your name and address or street for the record, address comments or questions to the council. If questions are of a nature where we can provide an answer, we'll do that as a follow-up once all the comments or questions have, have been done, and then the council will take up these matters. With that, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to, oh, the only other thing I'll say is that for, just from a point of view of logistics, if there's a lot of people that wish to speak and somebody is already at the microphone, we do have a second microphone and second chair, and certainly the next speaker can queue up there and be ready to go, just to kind of keep the process moving. So that's hopefully all the housekeeping you need to hear, and now we can hear from you, and I'll open it up for public comment on these short-term rental license applications. Anyone wish to speak from the public this evening? Hello and welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Dan Johnson-Powers. I live at 1974 Tatum Street. And what brought, brings me here tonight at first was the application for a short-term rental at 1901 Ryan, which is 45 degrees out my front window and directly across the street from currently unlicensed short-term rental. And so my first thought, when I heard that 1901 was applying to become a short-term rental, was, you know, another one? I mean, the two, the driveways of the two properties point right at each other. I, I thought, you know, gosh, such close proximity. And in the time that the property at 1973 Tatum Street has been a short-term rental, the occupants of the home and the owners have all been delightful. No issues with, with those folks. But as I started looking into this issue, there was just a lot more education that, that I got that led me to longer-term concerns for, for our city as a whole, when I looked at issues that other cities have, have experienced, specifically with Airbnb rentals, just because they're the largest short-term rental group out there. And, and I also had to chuckle, as the city manager pointed out, I, I saw that part of the approval process is that there haven't been any code or police complaints in, in the last five years. I can't speak for the other two properties, items F and G, but for the address at 1901, that's not a surprise, because there was a delightful family that lived there for the last five years, Debbie and Wale, and, and they just moved, and the home was just purchased. And so in terms of the city's process, I don't know that we know any history on the new property owner and whether or not they have other, you know, properties that they don't live in, that they rent out, and if there have been any issues with those properties. So maybe, you know, something for the council and the city to consider, I'm looking into for future applications. The two items that I found in this, these were peer-reviewed journals or studies done by universities, professors and the such, that, that were of interest. One was that the very short-term nature of, of people living in these, these homes led in other communities to degradation in the, the social fabric, I believe is the term that one of the researchers used, which then in turn caused an increase in crime. If we think about kind of the neighborhood concept of policing each other's kids and keeping a lookout and, you know, Mayor Rowe, hey, you left your garage door open and it's 10 o'clock, you know, we don't, we lose those relationships if we, if people are coming and going every so often. The second, and so increase in crime definitely is, is one concern. The second concern, and again, this isn't guessing, but rather what other cities have documented, is decrease in property values. And none of us want to see our, our property value go down. But those are two big concerns. I would encourage the city to look into this issue further. And if you need a volunteer, a resident, to help with that process, I certainly am willing to do that. But there are solutions that have been proposed and are in place that other cities have, have implemented. And I think we could be a leader here in Minnesota by addressing the issue before it becomes an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome.
Hi. Well, evening. My name is May Ying, and like Dan, I'm, I'm on, I'm at 190, 1921 Ryan Avenue, just down the ways from one of the houses that's on the proposed agenda this evening. I want to echo everything that Dan just, just said. I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, and I think that, you know, that's something that we should all really consider. I moved here to Roseville six years ago, and the reason why I moved to Roseville is that I just, I love the neighborhood. I love the location, and I can see why it's so attractive to people who want to do short-term lease. But I also love that we are more neighborly than any other place I've ever lived. I probably know more of my neighbors in this area than any of the other, like, 10 locations I've lived throughout the Twin Cities. And I strongly agree that we would lose that if we don't have, if we, if we don't make any serious oversight, have any serious oversight on how short-term rentals are, are handled. I don't know if I would want to wake up constantly to new people every morning next door. I know currently Julia Marcy, who's, who's a few houses, who's right next door, they are having new neighbors. It sounds like the property at 1901 is already being rented out without a permit, so, or a license. So again, it's like, who's overseeing this? Who's, you know, who's going to make sure that the property is well, well-kept, all that stuff? I think that, that those are important things that I don't think, you know, anyone's going to look into. Sorry, I forgot. I think, if, and as like Dan said, if you guys do need help with people to, you know, in the neighborhood, you know, help, help out, I'm willing to volunteer. I feel like Roseville's big enough that, you know, I'm not completely opposed to short-term rentals, but I think that we should look into how many per area, and then are they also paying taxes accordingly? Because I know that a lot of times, like, I know, that's probably more important to the city than anybody, right? Oftentimes, Airbnbs are just pay, you know, they're just collecting rent, and they're collecting like the rental fees, and they're collecting clean, clean, like, like cleanup fees and all that stuff. But what about tax? Like, I know hotels are taxed separately differently, but these properties are probably not at the same rate. So if they're going to run that, I'm thinking like, why not, you know, they, they should pay a higher license fee, and then they should also, you know, give back to the community if they're going to do that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Rowe and council members. Several of you have gotten a little email from me today. My name is Kelly Brooks, K-E-L-L-Y-B-R-O-O-K-S. I live at 1136 Ryan. You notice we have a lot of Ryan Avenue people. I don't live where May and Dan live, but I do live next door to a short-term rental, which is owner-occupied. And so I do wake up to new neighbors every day, in addition to the neighbors that live there. So I don't have opposition to any of these license applications specifically, but I echo exactly what Dan and May have said already. I really think that the city needs to look at this comprehensively, and not only for the short-term rentals that are non-owner-occupied, but also the ones that are owner-occupied. I did call last summer and spoke, I believe, to the city planner, and he said their owner-occupied really have no ordinances related to, to that situation. And I think this being a business is quite different than renting a room to a roommate, for example, in a long-term situation. I, I also think and hope that the city will look at limiting this and limiting it within a geographic area. It's, it is a very central location, and you can see why it would be attractive. And, and I don't, like I said, I, I'm not opposed to it overall, but I do think we should think about limiting the number of licenses and looking at the density, because in addition to the taxes that May brought up, I look at zoning, and these aren't zoned for, you know, commercial or high-density, and yet there are a number of units next door. In my personal experiences, somebody turns around in my driveway at least once a day, sometimes multiple times a day, to park in front of my house because they're staying next door. I have a teenage daughter who has commented several times, people are smoking outside behind the neighbor's house. The smoke is coming into her window. Her window faces their backyard. So I have a teenage daughter who is uncomfortable in her own home. Now, aside from erecting a six- or eight-foot fence, there really wouldn't be a way to, to block that. And, and I like my neighbors. I'm, I'm not, I don't have anything against the people. They're, they're lovely people. But I do wake up to new people, and I don't know if their backgrounds have been checked. I don't, I don't know who they are, where they're from. But I know that they turn around in my driveway and walk across, sometimes my yard in the summer, and have an impact to my family from the neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to comment this evening on this item? Any hands raised from people participating online?
There is not.
Okay. I do want to also double-check if there are any applicants here this evening who wish to speak in favor of their application. Wouldn't be under the same rules as public comment necessarily, but do want to provide an opportunity for anyone who is an applicant for one of the three licenses we're looking at this evening to have the opportunity to speak as well. Is there anyone here who is an applicant who wishes to speak in support of their application? And it's totally optional. I'm not seeing, no hands raised also?
No.
All right. Then with that, we'll close the opportunity for public comment and thank people for their comments. And I would, just to answer a couple of questions that I think came up during the comments. First of all, the licensed short-term rentals that are regulated in the city code do pay the hotel lodging tax, which is the same percentage that hotels pay. So we do collect that as long as they are licensed and are participating in the program, which they're obligated to do. Licensed, or excuse me, short-term rental operators who are owner-occupied are not covered by the same requirements, and so they are not currently charged the hotel lodging tax. The theory at the time when that was adopted by the council was that operating as a non-owner-occupied is more of, more like a lodging provider in a, in a hotel business. And so that's why there was that distinction. The theory also was, to get to maybe other questions, is that owner-occupied units would have the, the buy-in of that owner-occupied person to take care that, A, people are behaving properly and being dealt with if they're not, and then also the upkeep of the property, because it's where they live. And so that was some of the logic behind the differentiation there. I would also note that under our current scheme, anybody who is doing a short-term rental that is non-owner-occupied, our requirement during the off-season, October rental that is non-owner-occupied, our requirement during the off-season, October through May, is a minimum stay of seven days. And during the peak season, May to October, the minimum stay requirement is 10 days. And so that is, that is a requirement that was put in place by the council at the time this was enacted to severely limit the opportunity for people to rent, say, for a few hours to have a gathering or a party, or for a shorter, you know, one-day overnight or something like that. The idea being is that that will help to curb some of that behavior. And the reason we didn't necessarily put that in place, or any licensing in place, once again, for the owner-occupied, was that the feeling of the council at the time was that the owner-occupied would be able to police that better because they actually live on the site. So those are some of the things that I think are at least responsive to the questions. I did note the comment about checking on the property itself and its prior history is not necessarily relevant to the applicants. I may ask staff to speak a little bit to what we do check in terms of any kind of background checks or anything like that on applicants, just to get that answered. And then noted some of the other suggestions that we were hearing from folks in the comments, which certainly the council can talk about at the appropriate time. Mr. Tredgen, I don't know if you or maybe one of our other staff people could answer in terms of what we look at when we're processing a license in terms of the applicant themselves?
Well, I don't believe we do a background check, but I'll maybe pull.
They just have to probably demonstrate some insurance and some other things like that?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That was not part of the discussion or requirement as well.
All right. Other questions or follow-up from council members? Otherwise, I think we can move into some council discussion. Councilmember Strong.
I just thought it was important to mention, since this has been in effect, we have, in addition to the limits or the minimum requirement stays, it is four unrelated adults or less, or one family. So even though the one by my house used to say somehow they were going to put 18 people in there, that does not abide, and they actually no longer have a short-term rental. So, and then this other property that we've recently learned about was something new to us, and I believe we are investigating that situation. But yes, we don't have someone who wanders around looking, so we rely on our city staff to be told, kind of prompted by others. And that may be something we can discuss, having our communications team do something more involved, put that on the front paper, front page of our newsletter or something.
Just a couple of, and this is where I look to our attorney. In terms of certain types of applications that we consider, and I'm thinking a lot of land use, those have things like statutory time limits for consideration, where if you don't take action within a certain time, it's automatically approved by state law. And I don't think anything like that seems to apply here. I know we don't have something like that written into our code. There's some notion, I think, that because we've got these applications in-house, we have to act on them under our current system. And I wonder if it's not possible to table action on these applications if we wish to consider changes to our system before taking up those applications? Is that a legitimate course that we could take, or do we need to take action up or down on these applications before we can have more consideration of the licensing scheme overall?
Mr. Mayor, I have a very typical lawyer answer for you, which is sort of. You can delay consideration of these applications if there's more that you need to know about these applications. But given that the applications have been received by the city, unless you have a policy, these aren't zoning, these aren't land use applications.
Correct.
You're right. There's no statutory timeframe or no timeframe within your ordinances, but laying on top of everything you do is general concepts of fairness and due process. And so unless it is your, unless it is common for you to delay consideration of an application pending rewriting an ordinance, I would encourage you not to do that here.
All right. And the other thing I was going to ask is sometimes we do interim ordinances because we want more time to consider, say, six months or something like that, to consider something. If that was something the council wanted to take up, I'm presuming that an interim ordinance would still require the 10-day publication notice of any ordinance, and so we couldn't act on an interim ordinance this evening, for instance. And so, but if we wanted to do that, we would have to schedule it for a subsequent meeting and provide the proper notice, I'm presuming, for interim.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. Just trying to prime the conversation for the council for anticipating some of the questions that may come up. And let's see, there was one other thing I wanted to make sure I checked on, and it's escaping me right now, but, no, I lost it, so. Counsel, what are the thoughts here? Oh, the only other thing I was going to say is that I think there are good questions that have been brought up by the neighbors, and I think there may be some more things we want to look at in terms of how our code works. And that's probably going to take some time to figure it all out. So we, A, we have these three applications this evening to take up, and then we have to figure out maybe where we want to go in addition to that. So there's kind of two things we need to talk about and deal with. So with that, thoughts from the council? Councilmember Strong.
Yes. Actually, I was looking at what some of the other cities have done, and it's interesting. They've done everything from right out banning, like Eagan did that, because they said there was no good way to allow STRs in the neighborhoods. That was their reason behind that. And they had, another city did limiting where it could be, like Spring Park on Lake Minnetaka. They would do it only near commercial areas rather than quieter neighborhoods. And then to wide-open, do nothing and let people do whatever they want. And I'm wondering if it would make sense to consider limiting the number of short-term rentals, or I know there's another option of maybe limiting the space between rentals that we could do. I guess, and similar to license for, like, our THC products or liquor, we've limited those number of licenses, so I thought that might be something similar. And I think we, now we have, like, 10 or so STRs, but I thought we should try to get ahead of this before it might become a bigger issue. So talking about this makes sense to me, because I think back, I know we were thinking that massage parlors weren't going to be an issue either, and then they started to pop up everywhere, and then there was the discussion of possibly looking at limitations. So it's good to get ahead of it. And then one other thing I was thinking, actually two other things, was the amount of time it takes staff to investigate calls on properties, it's time-consuming and hard to verify. We don't look at the records of who's renting there and how long. And so if you get a neighbor calling and said they're doing short-term rentals less than seven, and then they go to verify it, the owner could say, no, I'm not doing that. So then you have the neighbor saying, yes, they are, and the owner saying, no, we're not, and there's no way to verify it. So now the staff is stuck trying to make a call on that. So again, we don't really have a good way of verifying some of that information. And then we've been getting a lot of feedback from residents, and, you know, we've got emails and comments, but I've also talked to a number of people. And I know the effect on neighborhoods is a little subjective, but it's important we hear what the people are saying, what they want in the city. You know, I was looking at the Roseville Comp Plan 2040, and in there it states, create housing that contributes to our existing neighborhoods. And so how does this, you know, contribute to our existing neighborhoods is something to consider. So I guess, it was, again, to sum it all up, I'd say I'd like to see us consider either limiting the number of licenses, or maybe putting in something where you can have, you can have the space between rentals defined. So that's what I have.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Strong.
This is probably a question for the attorney. Is there anything that would preclude us from having some geographic density restrictions? Is there anything that said, you know, that we can't have something, if we have such a thing, that we can't have three in a neighborhood? Or is there anything like that that is inherent to the law that says right out, no, we can't make those kind of limitations based on geographic area?
No, there's no explicit limitation of regulating the geography of where these would be.
Okay, thank you. Although, so currently, how many short-term rentals do we have?
I'm going to defer to seven.
Seven, including these three.
So four.
Four up till now. So we didn't have many, and since we had brought this on. But we do have a large number of single-family homes that are rented with long-term residential ends. So, you know, that's something to consider. A lot of people have complained about that as we're out on this. You know, I don't know if we have any, anything in our power to stop them from renting long-term. So, you know, that contributes to degradation of a neighborhood as much as anything else, too. And then I do have concerns about this 1901, if it is indeed currently being rented without our short-term rental license. I understand they already have pulled a long-term rental license, but until we verify that that is someone in there for a long period of time on a lease, I feel like we shouldn't allow them to have a license before they even started, if they're already not quite living up to our expectations.
Other thoughts from council members? And I did want to note that, the other question that I had was related to that, that we do have that requirement in our code, that if somebody is found to be doing short-term rental, they can't get, if they then subsequently apply for a license, they have, there's like a 60- or 90-day delay in terms of the effectiveness of that license. And I'm not sure how we verify that they've been doing short-term without a license necessarily. It sounds like it's a little difficult to check on. And I know also the question about, are people actually complying with the minimum stay? Do they have to provide records to the city that the city uses in terms of verification on that? And of course, how do we certify or know that those are actually valid records even when they're provided? So there's definitely some challenges there, just from the point of view of trying to enforce what we have. Other thoughts from other council members? Councilmember Raff?
I think that that is very accurate, that the checking, to be sure that what's being, claimed to be done is being done, that is difficult. I do know when I was door-knocking last summer, I stopped at a house, and the people who answered the door said, oh, we're in an Airbnb. And I said, okay, great. And then when I went to the next neighbor, I asked them about how that was with the Airbnb, and they said, oh, that's not listed as an Airbnb, but I know the owner is using it as an Airbnb. So then I checked with the city, and it was not registered as an Airbnb. So I guess the compliance part of this is tricky, because unless, we're sort of relying on neighbors, and I know that might put some of you in an awkward spot, but we're relying on everyone to let us know and let the city know if there are issues, because otherwise we can't really follow up with them very easily. Our inspections department can't be out in every house all the time. And that doesn't go just with this, it goes with all kinds of different enforcement things that we have. So that's one thing. And the other thing is if there are, I believe it's two complaints, then it can be referred back to the city to pull the license or at least talk about it, and it can go before the council. So that is one mechanism you have for changing the licensing next door, if it's bothering you. So those are my thoughts.
Right. Councilmember Ratten.
I wouldn't disagree with any of the lines of thinking that's happening here, that we look at some ways of limiting the total capacity, whether that's space between or density thing. I think I would be in favor of that, and maybe looking at how we can do a better job with giving the right tools to staff, or getting the right information to staff to enforce that. I think in this process, we've learned about one home here on Ryan, but we've also learned about some other homes in the neighborhood that may also be operating as non-owner-occupied. So suddenly we feel this tremor going out, and so I would also be in favor of interim ordinance that would kind of pause any future things to see if we can't put some better systems in place. You know, we've had this for a short period of time, we're learning, we don't have as much connection and control as we were hoping, and so maybe we need to look at some other options.
Right. Councilmember Strong.
I do recall at our initial discussions in this, we talked about maybe having a log that someone at a hotel would have to sign in and be a registered person. And at that time, it was turned down, but if, I think, you know, if we're wondering how compliant people are, if there's some type of log of people, I think this especially speaks to things that were not necessarily legal happening at one of the current, or the prior properties that is no longer licensed, or no longer operating as such. But I think that would be something if, you know, that would be potential, because I know in other cities, they do require a log. Do recall when I pulled a bunch of cities at that time, and many more cities have weighed in on this since that time.
I believe the discussion at that time was related to the theory that hotels and motels have registration lists or, you know, sign-ins or whatever. And I thought at the time that that was indicated, that that's no longer a requirement, or there's some potential, maybe, I don't know if it was constitutionality issue or what it was. So I think that's why we didn't go down that path at the time. I'd have to review the discussion, but I seem to recall it along those lines, that actually hotels and motels aren't. And it may just be because all the transactions are already by credit card anyway, for the most part, so you have records that way. But it seemed to me that was, that was what, and like, once again, we could review those discussions and that information from that time. You know, it seems to me we've got the potential to look at, and I would say that we could consider both a spacing limitation and a license quantity limitation if we wanted to. I don't think we have to choose one or the other necessarily. You know, and then it kind of dawned on me that maybe we could do, or add in a little bit of a scheme that we don't have now, which is for those owner-occupied, potentially, to just do a registration with the city, similar to what we do with longer-term rentals of single-family homes, where it's not a license and inspection program, but there is the requirement to pay like a $25 or $30 fee and register with the city and indicate who your contact person is for, theoretically, it would be the owner-occupied person, but, you know, so that you have some of that stuff on file with the city, and then we have also kind of more of a handle of which properties are involved in that activity. So that might be something we may want to take up as part of this as well. Does the council feel that the interim ordinance is something that we're going to want to look at in terms of being able to take the time to do the further analysis? Then we can maybe direct staff to proceed with that and be able to bring that at the next available opportunity. Councilmember Strong.
Could we also possibly put in this interim ordinance that maybe this owner-occupied rentals wouldn't exceed the four adults or one family non-related?
Well, the interim ordinance just puts in place a moratorium on the licensing so that we can then have all these discussions about exactly what we would do. And I think to that extent, a certain amount of our code already applies in those regards, so we maybe just need to more clearly communicate that. Now, we have that, sort of the way forward talked about. Now we've got three applications before us, that it sounds like our best action is to take action on those applications as presented under the current scheme. I did check with Mr. Tredgen earlier today, and we would have to, and our attorney can confirm or disabuse us of that if it's not the case, that we do have to have findings of fact if we deny an application this evening under our current scheme. And I did double-check in our code, and we don't really have any listed criteria for denial necessarily, so we would have to, you know, if we're going to deny anything, we would have to come up with that. So I just want to make the council aware of that prior to how we proceed. So, open up. Councilmember Strong.
Question, can we postpone that decision for a short period of time?
We certainly could table action. I think the point our attorney made is we probably can't table for six months.
Right, right. But that's why I'm trying to figure, what period of time would that be a reasonable amount of time to table?
Mayor, council members, reasonableness is in the eye of the beholder.
Perhaps in the eye of the judge that might get involved.
Yes, I know, yes.
Right. You know, the question is if you were to table because you were investigating something about a specific license, and that investigation was taking a certain period of time, that would be one way to talk about what reasonableness would look like. So it depends on the situation.
And I, just as a follow-up on that, could we investigate something about an application that is not currently a licensing requirement, as far as information they provide? If you know what I'm saying? If we decided that somebody, there was rumor that somebody had several licenses in other cities and had a really bad history, and, you know, is that something we could say, hey, we want to investigate more of that before we issue the license, even though there isn't necessarily perhaps in our code a specific criteria about that?
Mayor, I think inherent in your authority to grant the licenses is the ability to investigate grounds that would be denial. And certainly if you had a licensed applicant who appeared to be simply unqualified to run that kind of business, investigating that applicant would be a legitimate use of staff time. Whether or not it would then rise to the level, if it wasn't anywhere in your ordinance as a basis for denial, is going to kind of depend on what you find.
Sure, sure. Sure, sure. I just wanted to get towards that investigation part of it. So we have, once again, the three applications to consider. And I would entertain a motion, I think we can either take them all together or individually depending on the council's desire. Councilmember Ratten?
We have some various information about 1901. So I'm going to move to table the decision on 1901 Ryan to learn more information about the current use, whether it's being used as a short-term at this time or not, if we can. And if it becomes possible to do kind of background on the ownership history, not of that property, but of the owner.
Second?
All right. I would note that there is no discussion on a motion to table. The motion does not include a specific timeframe. And so it's sort of an indefinite table, which is fine. We can certainly do that. I just want to make sure before we move too far into this that we have all of our ducks in a row in terms of what the motion is. As the maker of the motion and the second are comfortable with the motion as it stands.
I love the motion.
All right. Well, you made it. All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Strong to table consideration of the application for the short-term rental license at 1901 Ryan so that we can do more investigation of the ability of the owner to meet, the history of the owner in terms of the operation of this type of business.
And the current operation of the home, to see if they are...
Oh, in terms of, right, if it is already being used as a short-term.
Yeah, whether that would already violate or prohibited and issue a license.
Okay. That's the motion. Once again, no discussion. Thank you for the clarification. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We then, once again, have the applications for 395 Woodhill and 770 Hynell Drive. Councilmember Schroder?
I would move that we would table both of those to be able to verify that neither of them are indeed renting also. Make sure that they are...
Same rationale?
Same rationale.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder to table those as well, under the same rationale. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Got the motion before us to table the other two applications for the same rationale. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? I heard four votes. I heard two ayes and two nays. Anyone wish to clarify their vote, please?
I'm a nay.
I'm a nay.
Three nays, okay. If that's what I want. So if that motion fails with councilmembers Stron, Graff, and Eton in opposition. Okay. So then we still have then the action to look at on those two applications for 395 Woodhill and 770 Hynell Drive. Councilmember Eton?
I move approval of those two items, F and G.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Graff to approve F and G. Discussion on the motion as not being a motion to table. Councilmember Eton is the maker of the motion.
Thank you. These two properties seem to be different in that there are not neighbor concerns that are directly about the operations at this time. And I think we need to be thinking about how far we can jump and move and second-guess and investigate. And so without any specific concerns coming from neighbors or from anything that we have at this time, I feel like we just need to move forward with these, focus on 1901 and a broader ordinance update.
All right. As the second, Councilmember Graff?
I would agree with Councilmember Eton's statements and look forward to the discussion about making this whole ordinance more applicable, more complete.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? I would just note that I think just on a philosophical basis of treating people equally in equal situations, I don't support the motion. And that's all I'll say. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
That passes three to two, just the opposite of the motion to table prior to this. Those licenses are then approved. Councilmember Eton?
I'd like to move an interim ordinance for short-term non-owner occupied rental in the city of Roseville for six months.
We don't have an ordinance before us, so I'm assuming you're not moving to adopt an interim ordinance. You're probably moving to direct the staff to bring back an interim ordinance?
Yes, I am.
All right.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Eton moves the interim ordinance be brought back for consideration, seconded by Councilmember Schroder. Discussion on that motion. Councilmember Eton is the maker of the motion.
I think we've said plenty and put a lot of ideas and we have people in the community who put forward a number of ideas. And so look forward to seeing what staff brings back to help improve this for our community.
As the second, Councilmember Schroder?
Yes, I would concur with Councilmember Eton.
Any other discussion on the motion? I think the only thing I will add at this time is that this is certainly a challenge and was acknowledged as such at the time we took up the licensing about a year or two ago. You know, and that the fact that there are only four currently licensed, I don't know how many are actually operating that aren't licensed, of course. And then there's the owner-occupied, which we don't keep track of in any way, which I would note. I think we should think about that, that notion of dealing with the owner-occupied as well. The challenge I think that we have is that certainly bad things can happen in neighborhoods and bad people can be in neighborhoods who actually own and live in homes indefinitely. And that's not any fun for neighbors either. And we have limited tools to deal with those. Even long-term renters can sometimes be issues. Owner-occupied people can do nothing to maintain their property and constantly be in violation of city code and be, have code enforcement called and enforcement actions taken. And our staff and council are very familiar with those. So I just want to make sure that we sort of have that frame of reference that we shouldn't automatically assume that every short-term rental is going to be a bad situation anymore so than we should assume that every owner that moves into your neighborhood is going to be a great neighbor. There's all kinds of people out there and there's all kinds of willingness to fit into society. And I don't want to put regulations, schemes in place that are overly burdensome to people who are otherwise good actors simply because we're afraid of what might be the bad actors. And so it's just the perspective. I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything. But I think as we do all of this, we always want to have that in the back of our minds as well, is that there's a whole lot of dynamics involved and that we want to do the best we can to provide the setup and the scheme that works for the community and gets us the best outcome going forward. So that was just, needed to be said. With that, we've got the motion before us to direct staff to bring back that interim ordinance as directed. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously and that those items are complete. Thank you again, everyone, for participating this evening. And we've got your names in terms of getting people involved if we do want to set up any kind of committee or anything like that down the road, but that's for future discussion. And appreciate the good discussion on the part of the council as well. So with that, then, we can return to our regularly scheduled agenda. And the first item under Business Items, the Section 7, is to receive a presentation from the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce. And we've got the President, John Conley, with us this evening for that presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Conley. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Thanks for the opportunity to share a quick update on the, oh, what happened here? There we go. And just a short update on the Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce and what we have going on, especially in Roseville here. And in particular, some of the new initiatives we've got planned. I wanted to focus on those. But really, our vision is to promote business, develop leaders, and connect communities. And we look through all of our decisions through that prism. So we, all of our initiative strategies, et cetera, tactics, all fall within that funnel. And we always try to focus everything we do and allocate resources based on that vision. So just want to start out with that. Next, I just wanted to give a current sit rep, a current situation report. 300 broad, over 300 broad members amongst the region. Our financial health, our fund balance is within line with most nonprofits. Five months' reserve, operating costs, which is, you know, good considering coming out of COVID. And we have no debt, which is always great. And our offices are located right here in Roseville, at the Reserve, that shared office space right off of Highway 36, next to the Good Earth. Our programs and events, the most recognizable for Roseville is the Roseville Business Council, which meets consistently on a monthly basis. By the way, for everyone's information, that meeting now is here on that fourth Wednesday of the month at City Hall here. So why we did that is a couple of reasons. One, we always like to change the venue up a couple of times. You know, both our previous hosts, the Builders Association of the Twin Cities, as well as McGough Construction, were very hospitable. But we just like to move it around and not to put too much of a burden on, you know, too many of those folks and those organizations. So we're going to be here for a while, but the beauty about that is now, not only are we be able to meet in person, but we can also stream that through the technology that's here. So we can reach more people. So that was another strategic thing we decided to do. So Roseville Business Council and that hybrid situation is a nice feature that we wanted to add this year. Some of the local events we're always engaged with is Taste of Rose Fest, as well as some of the other select ones, whether it be an annual meeting or something that is a fundraiser for the area. So our annual events, we always have annual events that go on every year. You know, every Chamber of Commerce does galas, business councils. This year, our event's coming up in two weeks over at the Doubletree here in Roseville. So we like to, you know, make sure that we give an opportunity for all of our members to network and share. Because why folks and organizations and businesses would participate and engage with the Chamber of Commerce is, the why is they want to network. They want to be in front of other businesses that have local solutions for them. And two, they want that visibility, whether they're a brand-new business that's launching and getting the PR that way, or establishing connections locally with either a business or those residents. So those are the big whys. And they also want to just build their network and be out there, engaged in the community. We do have some select public policy opportunities. We aren't a huge public policy chamber, but we rely more on the Minnesota Chamber at the state level. But we like to engage in the local level and the county level on those things. And I'd mentioned before, the business openings, career fairs, et cetera. We always like to be engaged in that. And just to segue for that, we do have, you know, a couple of other things going on as far as the, our board of directors really gave a strong directive with a manufacturing cohort that is a new initiative of ours that I have a handout that I wanted to share later on. But just real quick, our board governance. We have a nine-member board representing various industries and backgrounds. So we have finance, we have education, we have media, and we have manufacturing. So we have a nice broad section, cross-section of folks that represent and give input and oversight into what we're doing. We're in good stead with the Department of Revenue and we have updated state and federal filings. We're very active committees, especially our ambassador team and task force and marketing and public policy. Now, I'd like to get to more of the things I'd really like to share. And that is then the manufacturing cohort group that we just got off the ground in December. This is a group that we really want to stress on the manufacturing side and make connections with local manufacturers, whether they be an Old Dutch or a smaller business like a smaller manufacturer of products. We like to keep them in touch with the local education, career people, as well as the local employment services, Deed, Ramsey County, all these things. Because there's so many resources now available through not only state, but also the counties and the cities, that we like to keep them aware of all these resources. And also prime the pump for manufacturing because I, on a personal note, do a lot of certificates of origin. And I love doing those because that tells me that businesses are exporting that product out of Roseville into other areas and that money then is coming back. And that's really how a economy prospers, is that outside money coming in and funneling in and creating jobs and investment. So we always like to do those many certificates of origin. And we think that by doing a focus of manufacturing and putting more resources and effort into that and sharing those opportunities of careers in manufacturing, that that can help. You know, it is one of the things right now, in the current situation, is one of the fastest paths to a middle-class lifestyle for young people. Because there's usually no debt, there's a lot of apprenticeship opportunities, plus a lot of on-the-job training in those circumstances. So we think it's a very good thing for this area because we do have a good manufacturing base, plus a lot of diverse here in Roseville. We also had a new initiative called Welcome Back to Lexington Avenue, which we did for our neighbors over here in Shoreview and Arden Hills. The reason why I bring this up is because we're going to use this template to some of the actions and tactics and strategies to re-invite people back to the corridor when Fairview goes under construction this summer. Because MinDOT, we already in fact had a preliminary meeting with our merchants along the corridor and we probably will do one in March or early April, and letting them know what the timeline is for construction along the Fairview corridor there near Highway 36. Because there will be some disruption. And one of the things we really want to try to do is, again, re-invite people if they've changed behavior and re-invite them back to that corridor and also let them know the best ways to get to those merchants in that corridor. So that's just one of the things we're going to learning and trying to help businesses out when they're facing maybe a short-term hardship due to road construction. We always want to do outreach and plus, we want to share always some benefits with our affinity programs, whether it be an association with the Minnesota Chamber, where they offer a health program for businesses 10 and under, which we do offer for our members. By being a member of the Twin Cities North Chamber, you qualify for that. So that's a nice benefit in affinity programs that we have. Just to review some of the things we like to do, participate in grand openings, ribbon cuttings, engage in new initiatives. We always like to continue to bring important items to, you know, that are especially important to the businesses operating in Roseville. And share those, whether it be through e-communications, invites, or special events like the Roseville Business Council. Just a few things in particular, again, about Roseville that I wanted to share was I participated in the Partners in Energy Task Force that met over a two-year period and made recommendations on energy and so forth and your energy plan going forth. So I was involved in that. Plus, I did outreach with your intern in a lot of businesses, showing support for that program because we really believe that efficiencies and the businesses, if incentivized, will go down that path of creating more efficient ways to, you know, be a good partner in energy. So that is about all I wanted to say, other than the fact that I think that it is a, it's important that people go where they're invited. And one of the things we always try to do as a Chamber of Commerce is invite people to do business here. And we have great partners with Visit Roseville, Roseville Visitor Association, and Twin Cities Gateway and the other communities too as well. So we really like to emphasize that. And I think by having that opportunity to invite people to spend money in Roseville, that's a big thing and a big ask that we always try to do out in the marketplace. And now I'd just like to answer any questions that you have. For me, I'm happy to do that, or in follow-up, of course, because you have a busy agenda. Happy to do a one-on-one later on with everyone.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. We appreciate that update from our partner chamber. Any questions or feedback from councilmembers for Mr. Conley?
I appreciate all this work. You are certainly very visible and I appreciate that you partner with our city and are talking about partnerships with education institutions, our schools in the area. That is an important thing that is a struggle for everyone to quite put together. So appreciate your efforts to try to continue in that direction.
Yeah, the trades are really much needed in our workforce today, so.
Other questions, comments, feedback? Councilmember Graff?
Just on that note, I'm sure you've probably seen, but the high school has some excellent...
Absolutely. With the remodeling that they did, absolutely. That whole program expanded in the hospitality area in particular. I toured it before it was done.
But also auto body and...
Auto body, and carpentry in the building aspect. Yep.
Councilmember Strong?
I just wanted to thank you for the programs. I'm not always able to come, but it is nice, as you and I have talked in the past, finding ways to even be more inclusive of small businesses that really need just nuts and bolts. How do we get by? But I appreciate the opportunity to hear people who are amazing, like Ling Becker and other folks who come and bring their expertise, or the demographer, someone from the Federal Reserve. It's really interesting. It's really interesting to hear their perspectives and how it all impacts us in some way.
Yeah, yeah. The beauty about the Roseville Business Council is that we always encourage members to engage and participate, but this is open to every business that is in this area and the footprint. So, you know, you don't have to be a member to benefit from that, making that connection at a Roseville Business Council meeting.
Absolutely. Councilmember Short.
Again, thank you so much for your presentation, and I am really happy to see you talk about manufacturing. I think that's going to be a key piece to add to and keep adding to. And I think people don't realize that manufacturing goes across all industries, so it's not just, you know, one particular thing. So to, you know, so if someone was interested in, they are good jobs and very much needed, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, one of the biggest users of our certificates of origin program is Abbott, which is, you know, medical device. They're shipping all over the world. And it can be, like you said, a food processor like an Old Dutch or a medical manufacturer or, you know, even a small fabricator, so.
The only other thing I wanted to note, just for the official record, is in addition to McGough and the Builders Association, our original host for the Roseville Business Councils back in the day was Affinity Plus Federal Credit Union.
That's true.
In their new facility, which is not so new anymore, obviously, but at the time that was great to start off with them and that, their facility. So I wanted to make sure we gave them credit too.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you again for being here this evening and all the work that you're doing other than this evening, and we look forward to the next Roseville Business Council.
Thank you again for the opportunity, Mayor, members of the council, city staff. Appreciate the partnership.
You bet. Thanks. All right, we have another presentation this evening. This is an update from Excel Energy on their Painted Pole Project, known as the Painted Pole Project Presentation, which I thought was just wonderful in our agenda this evening. So we have our Public Works Director, City Engineer, Jesse Frehhammer with us this evening to introduce the project, and I'll turn it over to Jesse for his introduction of the speaker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just real quick, I briefly mentioned this at the end of our work plan. The scope has scaled down slightly, so that should be good. So this project overall should be a lot less impactful than some of the previous projects we've had. But with that, I'll let Kirsten Sersland, the Community Relations Manager with Excel Energy, and Joseph Samuel, he's the Senior Project Manager, I'll let those two give you guys more details and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
This will be a little bit less impactful project than our recent guest.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It is always a pleasure to be in front of a great partner in Roseville. We are here to share information about our painted pole replacement project, so creatively named. I'm Kirsten Sersland, and I'm the Community Relations Manager for Excel Energy, and I'm here with Joe Samuels. As Jesse said, he's the Transmission Project Manager overseeing this project that we're presenting tonight. So you have comprehensive information in your packet. I scaled that down to about five slides, so if you have any questions, save it for the end, and Joe will answer all your questions. So just know that this does not track with what you have in your packet in the interest of time and just to scale it down. Quick refresher on how electricity works, really oversimplified. So power plants generate the power, high-voltage transmission lines deliver that electricity long distances, the substations you see in your neighborhoods, they step down that voltage, so then it's distributed on the power lines that you see in your neighborhoods. Those smaller power lines are what lights up your home and your businesses and your farms. For the purposes of tonight, we are going to be talking about the high-voltage transmission So this is a picture of our existing painted poles, and on the far right, that's the replacement pole. So Excel Energy has painted transmission poles that were installed in the late '70s and early '80s. If you're somewhat like me, you go, huh, that's only like 20 years. In fact, it's about 45 years. I know, I had to. So these poles have reached the end of their paint coating life expectancy, and so we're going to replace them with these new galvanized poles to help ensure that we can deliver safe and reliable electricity to our customers in Roseville. This is a, it's not very detailed. So in this spring, Excel will start replacing these 115 KV poles. We'll start along South Owasso Boulevard near Woodland Avenue West. Residents can expect occasional lane closures while equipment is being moved in and out and while the actual pole replacement work is being done. We'll start in March. We expect to be complete by May. Most of the work will be done between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Weather-dependent, we'll work on weekends. We live in Minnesota, you can count on some weekends. That will be 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And per pole, it takes about a half-day to set up, a day to replace it, and a half-a-day to tear down. So that somewhat explains the math. Our schedule and project information, we'll do some public outreach and a mailing to all the homes affected by early February. No electric service interruptions to Roseville residents. This is all transmission stuff, not distribution stuff. And we will have a project website, like our other project, our road projects, that will go live in early February. It'll have all the public outreach information, Excel Energy contact information. I will forward that to council and staff as soon as that goes live. We expect it to be early, early February. So again, thank you for letting us come present this to you tonight. We expect to have some questions from you. Thanks to Roseville for being great partners with us. When we do these big projects, we really appreciate the partnership and the wealth of information and resource that Jesse gives to us as well. So with that, we will, we, Joe, will stand for questions because you don't want me to answer any technical questions on this.
Very good. Well, thank you for that information and the more detailed information in the packet as well, and for your outreach to the neighbors and the community surrounding this project so that they can be aware of what's going on. I think that's something that wasn't always done in the past, and I think all of us have gotten better at, and we appreciate Excel's efforts in that regard too. Questions or follow-up from councilmembers? Councilmember Strong.
Will there be street parking restrictions during this time in this area?
So there will be traffic control, so we'll have lanes closed, which means there would be some restriction to street parking, and we'll be working with the Public Works Department. They'll be reviewing our traffic control plans for the proposed work.
And the neighbors will be alerted in the communications and.
Part of that outreach, we'll be talking about lane closures and impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I imagine that it's kind of a rolling project from one end to the other so that it's not like we close and have one lane traffic on that, on the street the whole time. It's just, it's portions of the street during portions of the project.
Correct. Yeah, our goal is, and again, replacing these type of structures, it's somewhat of a new concept. It's different than replacing wood structures, but we'll set up about every three structures and we'll kind of roll that down the right-of-way. So as you indicated, the entire road will not be closed during that period.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Well, we appreciate once again the information and look forward to the project being completed, as I'm sure you do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is a joint meeting with representatives from the Parks and Rec Commission about their activities and specifically related to the naming of Pocahontas Park. And so I'll provide an opportunity for members of the commission to get set up here at the table. We're going to take about a five-minute break to do that. All right, why don't we break for about five minutes? Yes, go ahead. All right, we're back from a short break here to get everybody situated and make sure we are all set to go here with a smooth transition. We've got the Parks Recreation Commission here with us this evening for a, our, what am I trying to say? I was going to say annual, but I think we try to be more than annual opportunity to get together, so I'm not losing what the vocabulary for that will be. We'll just say, you're here. We appreciate you being here, and we'll turn it over to you for introductions and tell us a little bit about what you've been up to and what you're planning to be up to and a very specific topic for this evening. So with that, I think, Mr. Ho, you're still the chair?
Vice Chair, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Rose, city councilmembers. We are here, yes, and it is almost a year since the last time we were here. We were here on January 31st, 2022.
Just under the wax.
Almost a year. As I stated there, I am the current Vice Chair. We're here to give you a little update on our work from 2022, primarily talking about our, our big work of the year, which is Pocahontas and looking for some, some guidance to help close that, that project out. I'll shift to my left and let each of the commissioners that are here introduce themselves individually.
Yep, and I'm Daryl Vreul.
Lindsay Matt Benson.
Michelle Lenhart.
Joe Arneson.
So with that, some review of what we've done in 2022. As we talked about, we're delivering our recommendation to you on the renaming of Pocahontas Park, and then there's a couple of commission updates, priorities that we have looking forward that we'd like to make you aware of. This slide is kind of hard to see, but it does kind of focus what our goals were for 2022. We spent a couple of meetings setting out some goals, assigning key point people to work on them, and they're not just goals to finish in 2022. We took the, the process of making some longer-term goals as well to help overall support the whole park and recreation department. But some of our highlights for 2022 are after discussions with the city council, we opened our first dedicated court, or pickleball courts at Evergreen Park, and all observations are, they are very successful and very used, to the point that I've heard, I haven't seen it personally, but at least early in the winter, the residents were shoveling them on a daily basis before they went out. Some other highlights, you know, the oval had a huge project, thanks to the council and your support with the legislature and the governor to get some bonding funds. The project is complete, the oval is up and running, and it looks fabulous. We also reviewed some of the park and recreation equity and initiatives in the plan, and a lot of our work had that involved in it. Slide here showing the oval and the new ramp in, the all-inclusive exercise equipment that's around the frog pond at Central Park, the inclusive playground that was opened up or reopened up and it added on to at Central Park, and just a couple of other events that We annually meet with the Park Maintenance Superintendent and review what their project plan is for the year and provide feedback to them on what they do. We've got here a picture of a renovation at the American Legion Baseball Field and one of the playground builds. As I stated, we're always engaged. We were out in the Discover Your Parks, doing the natural resource work on the, on a monthly basis, and playground builds. Don't look at the guy standing up tall in this picture. I got caught that day trying to put a slide up that didn't go up. Now I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Lenhart and Commissioner Matt Benson, and they are going to give you a little overview on where we are at with the Pocahontas Name Conversation.
All right, hello, Mayor, hello, city council. I will say, I came into this Pocahontas Park name conversation very late. I've only been on the commission for a year, or less than a year. And so I kind of got at the end of the process. So any of my colleagues on the commission, I invite you to add comments as you see fit about some of the history. But the engagement process was developed on the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, Racial Equity Toolkit, whoo, long name there. And throughout the process, I believe it was about a two-year process engaging with Native American individuals with expertise on the subject, Native American residents of Roseville, neighbors of Pocahontas Park. I think primarily in what you'll see in your packet of the name suggestions, so many of those came from neighbors who care incredibly deeply about that park, and then Roseville residents in general. We, the commission reviewed articles and other resources that dealt with the use of Native American names, and it really was a two-year community engagement process included in community events like Discover Your Parks. We had index cards where people could name parks. A lot of parents embarrassed their teenage children about getting them to name parks. It was hilarious but also really fun. And so there was just a lot of. And so there was just a lot of different ways for people to engage with this naming process. Next slide, please. There were 71 name suggestions that covered, covered everything, and that the feedback was really, really varied. As you can see in your packet, there's a whole bunch of different names, from keep at the na, keep at Pocahontas Park to change it to something completely different. The general feedback from Native American individuals were that a Dakota name would be the most appropriate because Roseville was on Dakota land. The commission spent some time, two meetings, reducing the list from 71 to five finalist, final lists, and we spent a lot of time really engaging with each other on what could be a good name for this park, what would be the best name for this park. And we are ultimately recommending one name, and that is Kaia Park. And I leave it to Commissioner Lenhart, who is the one who proposed that name.
Thanks. So, so right, so the name that we're recommending is Kaia Park. Kaia means turtle in Dakota. And some of the reasons, just wanted to share with you some of the reasons that this is the recommended name. So turtles are sometimes seen at the park. There's actually a wetland lake area nearby, and so the neighbors said that they saw turtles in the area. A neighbor specifically was one of the people who suggested the name. And it was a name that was supported by Dakota stakeholders, and they, and we had a good, like, as you saw on the last slide, a really good representation of folks with Dakota background that participated, and it was one of the names that was recommended by that group. And it complied with the naming policy, which we know you guys can appreciate, but we made care, we were careful to follow the naming policy. And we also felt, felt like it had kind of a playful park feel to it, and that it could even be used in some of the, you know, the style and design around some of the playground equipment, so that people could see the tie-in to turtles, and then children could learn about that that's a Dakota word, that, for the things that they're seeing in the park. So, let's see. So, right, so the, again, the recommendation is to change the name from Pocahontas Park to Kaia Park. Some of the other things that are part of the recommendation, though, are also to look at signage, so to, to find ways to help people understand why there's a Dakota name there, how this was Dakota land, and to potentially include a name acknowledge, I'm sorry, a land acknowledgement as part of the signage and the naming there. So kind of somehow finding a way to tie in that history. And now we're open to answering any questions you have.
All right, well, thank you for all the work that the commission did on everything that you talked about in the presentation, and certainly on this specific project. It was probably more, more work than anybody probably anticipated at the beginning of the process, but, but as always, I think the outcome seems to, seems to be a positive reflection of, of the process and the people involved, and certainly your work as a commission. I'll open it up to council members for any questions or feedback or comments or whatever. Councilmember Graff.
First of all, thank you for a really excellent process. I do know that from residents, I've heard over and over again that this one really worked for them and that they really felt that they were heard. And I know we, as a council, want to have that kind of interaction with our residents because it, it makes our job easier too. So I really appreciate that. I think your, your end name is, is brilliant. I, I support that, and I think that all the reasons you gave, talking to the Dakota people that are still members of our community, and also the other residents in their input was, was spot on, so thanks. I really don't have any other comments on it, but I wanted to give you that feedback.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Eddin?
I would agree with those comments. Thank you for all the work, and thank you to staff for a couple of years of, of continuing that work. I would just like to note, I would absolutely be in support of signage with educational peace around the history of Dakota land and peoples as part of this name change. I think that's an opportunity here for us to do a little bit more, so I would encourage that to, to be a piece of this long-term.
Councilmember Shorter?
I guess I'd like to echo, thank you so much, and I actually watched some of your meetings and watched how frankly you guys interact, engage with each other and had some great dialogue and, you know, asked some tough questions, and so not only engaging with the, you know, the community and then getting some advice on, you know, people who could really shed some light on this, but then within your own group, you know, talk through everything that you'd learned, and the process was really well done, and I too would support, you know, your, your suggestions, so thank you.
Councilmember Strong?
All of that. I, I was just really impressed. I kept thinking, why are you not done yet? And yet, when I would see Michelle at the park, or, you know, I'd see you around, or Lindsay mentioned something at some point somewhere, and so I just really appreciate the depth, because I don't know that there have been many projects where I felt like I saw so many places so many times. And I fully support a land acknowledgement, either as a one-time acknowledgement at the site or something that we do more completely acknowledging. I think I would defer to the elders of the Native communities and what they feel would be most appropriate, so that it's acknowledgement of how they relate to the land. I wouldn't want to infect my own opinion on that, but what they felt would be the most appropriate. But I'm fully supportive of the name, and I love it, and I love the, the opportunity to further engage this park to reflect turtles moving forward.
And I'll echo what has been said as well, and as well about the educational component. I might even suggest that depending on how it goes and what we think about it, we might even think about more broadly throughout our park system, acknowledgement both of the, the history of the Dakota presence and all of the land in, in Roseville. I think it ties into our, especially our, our natural spaces and our entire park system. You know, it might be a natural thing to have more than just specifically in this park, although obviously this is sort of the genesis of it, but then also an opportunity, you know, once again throughout our system to, to have a, a consistent theme of education and, and that piece of it, I think is, is something we can, we can do a lot with as a park and rec system. And so certainly it's, you know, it could start with this park and then who knows where it goes from there, but I think it's, it would be appropriate to think about how it could, it could be a part of all the things we do in the park system, so appreciate that. It, it really gets easy to support a recommendation when we know what's going into it, and we see all of the work that everyone has done and, and the superb engagement, once again, by the Parks and Rec Committee, Commission and staff and department in terms of, you know, making sure that decisions are fully informed by and influenced by the people that are involved. So thank you for that. I don't, do we need to have a particular motion at this time? I can't remember what the requested actions are.
Motion to approve the name change.
Consider a motion.
Yeah, all right, is that a motion, Councilmember Strong?
Yes, it is.
All right. The name change as well as the other recommendations?
Yes.
I thought so. Councilmember Strong moves, Councilmember Eddin seconds to accept the recommendation for the name change as well as the other recommendations related to education and looking at a land acknowledgement. I think Councilmember Strong had very good points about making sure that we're definitely connecting with Native peoples and how we do that, so that's important. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, anything else?
Nothing.
Councilmember Eddin?
Said plenty.
All right, other discussion? All right, we've got the motion before us once again to accept the park recommendations, recommendations as to the renaming of Pocahontas Park as Kaia Park, as well as the education and land acknowledgement piece of it. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, again, and we look forward to the grand opening and renaming of Kaia Park in the near future.
We do have one more slide, but if I could, on this topic, before we leave it, Mr. Mayor, as at least one of you pointed out, this was almost a three-year process. When it started, I was the chair, and we were in the hotbed of COVID and had several public hearings, virtual only, and I got to be honest with you, I think that brought more people to the table, because they didn't have to come to us to speak. They could speak to us from their home. So if you will, a plug to COVID, it might have actually got us some more public feedback than if COVID wasn't there.
All right.
All right, with that, as we move to our 2023 priorities, I believe Commissioner Matt Benson is going to speak on a couple of these.
Yes, and I also want to invite my fellow commission members to add anything that I forget. So we have set forth two 2023 priorities for the Parks and Rec Commission, just to kind of think about as we go, and one of those is the city campus master plan and veterans' park. So we have a number of concerns that are really central to the Parks and Recreation amenities that we have in Roseville. One is losing over three and a half acres of parkland, including two soccer fields, a baseball, softball field, and a half-court basketball park as well as a playground. Like, that is huge for our community, and if the goal from the Parks Master Plan is to not really have a net loss of park space, the commission has expressed concerns that the loss of these park and recreational amenities will impact the citizens of Roseville and the Parks and recreational programming that Director Johnson and his team put on. And we would encourage the, having some thoughtfulness around thinking about Parks and recreational programming and space as the campus master plan is created. And I also want to say, I believe it was Councilmember Schrader who mentioned the Roseville 2040 Master Plan, and there's a lot in there about Roseville Parks and Recreation and space, and looking towards the future rather than just looking for what our current needs are. We also have talked about how there might be a misalignment with the envisioned Roseville process that is happening. From what we see as members of the commission, from talking to our neighbors and our friends and our family members, there is a lot of concern from citizens about the loss of park space and the desire to have more community space in the civic campus redesign, akin to our neighbors in Maplewood, St. Anthony Village, and Shoreview. We do acknowledge that the maintenance facility attempts to solve one set of issues, and a lot of those are Parks and recreational issues with the need for maintenance and storage, but it does feel a little presumptive to move forward with the project and to really not look at it in a holistic perspective. And it also, from what I've seen from meetings that I've watched of the city council, I believe Councilmember Strong has mentioned that this does not even meet all the space needs that the city of Roseville needs, especially park and recreational storage space. And so it is really challenging that it's not, it's not necessarily thinking about future needs and really future thinking around Parks and Recreation and what our community needs. And one other concern that the Parks and Recreation Commission has mentioned is that the messaging around the maintenance facility is really challenging, that from what we hear from our friends and our neighbors and our family members is that very few people are supportive of a maintenance facility, that outside of a new license center, because many of us experienced the license center, we would encourage the city to really, again, think about these issues holistically, really looking at all of the different pieces of Roseville and what makes us all so great, so that the city can have its maintenance and storage needs, but also meet the needs of its citizens. So I hope I expressed, we've all talked about well, and I would invite you all to add to that point, if you would like to.
Yeah. I would just add, I think the concern, my, my biggest concern is just that there's no net loss of open space, that we, that the Parks and Rec is just such an important priority for the city and for the citizens, and if, if we are going to use that space in that way, then we need to figure out a way to expand and create other outdoor space to ensure that we have, we just don't want to see a loss.
I would say either outdoor or indoor. You know, if you're having a building built, maybe there's indoor stuff too that can take place, not directly of that sport or activity, but something different.
And I think pulling onto what Commissioner Arneson just mentioned is, the envisioned Roseville process is an amazing process that's going on right now, and I know Commissioner Arneson is a big part of that, but our other kind of priority for 2023 is to really continually engage with that envisioned Roseville process and use the information learned to determine the next steps for the Parks and recreational system. So thank you.
Thank you. And absolutely, we encourage everyone to be involved in that, not just Parks and Rec Commissioners, but everybody in the community, certainly, and your networks and everybody else, you know, I'm glad, glad to hear there's some, some word of mouth getting out there and synergy in that regard, but we can always use more input, so appreciate that. Anything else from a council or commission perspective?
With that, that's all we have, unless anybody has any ideas you want to throw our way that you haven't heard already that we're working on or that you'd like us to work on, and we'd be happy to take up the challenge.
Anything else from council members? I think we're good for now. Thank you again.
Well, thank you. On that, on that, real quick, if I could, I do myself term out at the end of March. I'd like to thank the city council. I've been your chair, your vice chair, and general member of the commission for, what would it, if I'm terming out, what would it be? Five, five years, because I filled a, I filled a slot. It's been very enjoyable. You've all been great to work with. We've had a few challenging topics come up, and we've worked through them, and we've gotten ourselves in a better position as a city, I believe, because of it. Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening. Feel free to stick around for the rest of our, nobody ever takes us up. All right, that then brings us to our final business item this evening, because item 7E was taken off the agenda, which is 7D, and that is to have a kind of a first look and discussion related to the Phase Two zoning code amendments specifically related to shoreline and sustainability aspects, and I will turn it over to our community direct, Community Development Director, Janice Gunlock, and our consultants to bring us up to date on these items, if you're ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you all recall, this is sort of a second phase of a larger project that we started in 2020, late 2020, early 2021. The first phase of updates was really geared towards things that we sort of had to do to make sure that our official zoning map and our comprehensive plan aligned with one another. And then the second phase of updates, there are lots of goals and objectives within the comprehensive plan, and there are certain rules and regulations that we could tweak to try and better achieve those goals and objectives. And so the second phase of updates was focused on things that maybe weren't required, but things that we would like to do to better align our goals. So we've had our consultant, Hozington Kogler Group, Inc., help us along the way with the Phase One updates as well as the Phase Two updates. We've sort of centered on two topics for the second phase of updates, and so with that, I'm going to sort of turn over them to go through the bulk of the information, and then at the end, I'll come back with sort of where we're at and what our recommendations are for you tonight, so. Jeff and Rita with HKGI.
And I'll start. Do you want, you can, you want me to run it? Well, at least for me. Okay. Minor less. So.
You can turn that mic now, they moved it.
I know they did, and I wasn't sure if I should touch it. I'm very sensitive of the fact that I'm not supposed to.
Just rotate it.
You want me to rotate it?
Yeah, thanks for reading.
Yeah, I've been to enough meetings here that I know not to touch it.
I understand, or afraid to.
I was, totally, I did. Did you see me look at it when I sat down? I was like.
The power you hold. Well, I was just thinking, I'm perfectly calm about it, but apparently my prior acting related to microphones has just got everybody so scared. All right.
All right. Thank you. Jeff and I are happy to be here this evening and talk about the zoning ordinance amendments. Just in summary, when we think about the sustainability-related zoning amendments, we kind of have grouped them into four categories, and you can see from this slide how they affected the zoning chapter. So the shoreline overlay district, which I'll focus my time on after doing some introductions, really looks at repealing Chapter 1017 and then replacing it with a new chapter or a portion of a chapter that will go in the overlay district's chapter. And then Jeff has been working on the sustainability side of this, and he will focus on talking about the electric vehicle charging standards that will be inserted into the parking chapter. Then there are some new landscaping standards that are inserted into the landscaping and screening chapter, and then the creation of the sustainable building incentives, which is a new section, which will go in the property performance standards chapter. On the next slide, we just summarized the process that we went through. We've had a number of meetings with the Planning Commission, starting in June, June 1st, when we talked about the shoreline specifically, and then kind of an overview of sustainability requirements or incentives. Then we spent a few months more talking more specifically about the sustainability and really developing the different elements of that, so what are the zoning regulations? What are potential incentives that could be explored? And then we finalized those elements last fall, and there was a public hearing held in December and a recommendation from the Planning Commission for your adoption in consideration this evening. So as I said, I will focus on the shoreline overlay district. The shoreline overlay district is following state shoreline management program, which dates to the late 60s, early 70s, when it was created, and that created a set of shoreline rules that are administered or overseen by the Department of Natural Resources, but are actually administered through local ordinances. And so you've had shoreline regulations, as I'm sure you all know, and our goal, one thing that had been discovered a few years thing that had been discovered a few years ago, is that your shoreline ordinance and the model ordinance, because every once in a while the DNR updates their model ordinance, they had actually kind of gotten away from each other. There was not really an easy way that residents in particular, as well as elected and appointed officials, could see the similarities between the two ordinances. So the focus that we had was on comparing the two and trying to figure out how do we move forward to kind of bring them back together, but yet still allow the city to have its uniqueness, because that is one element that the DNR does allow, is individual communities to modify the shoreline regulations to best fit the characteristics of their own community. And so that's what we spent time with the planning commission going through. We did have a public open house, so we wanted to just highlight that briefly. The open house focused only on the shoreline overlay district changes. It is a requirement of your code that when you're going to actually do map amendments, that you have a public open house. City staff held it for six hours at City Hall in November. There was about 25 households that attended. Generally, there weren't significant concerns. There were questions, obviously, that staff answered and tried to walk through the changes. I'll walk through some of those changes because they are notable for households, some households that previously had probably no idea that the shoreline even existed now or inside of it. So it's understandable that folks had questions. Really, staff came away with maybe one household that had a very specific concern, and that has to do with changes to impervious surface coverage. So obviously, staff can continue to work with that individual. So as I referenced, there are some changes, most notably possibly is the fact that the shoreline district itself will be extended from 300 feet to 1,000 feet. That's kind of a given. I should say, as I said, you can negotiate things, but there are some things that are probably not negotiable, and having the distance is one of those areas that would be pretty challenging. It is standard across the state that the shoreline district extends 1,000 feet from publicly designated waters. One element you have is for city-designated public waters, and so we did retain the 300 feet from those. So those haven't changed, but there have been more properties that are now included within the 1,000 feet. The city's existing chapter, as I said, was based on historical model ordinances, but they were a few ordinances ago. I've been doing a lot of shoreline updates in the last five years, and so I kind of know the different iterations, and yours probably was a little farther back than others. It also had some more uniqueness that over the years you've inserted. You have amended it a number of times over the years, and so there's a lot of things that kind of got adjusted, and then we needed to figure out, do we maintain it or not? In the end, it was generally felt that we should start with the model ordinance and then make adjustments that fit the interests of the city as opposed to trying to retain what you had and then trying to justify why we were retaining things. Part of that is so that to address one of the concerns that came up with development, that your ordinance didn't follow the model ordinance, this helps reinforce the fact that generally you are following the DNR rules, you just have certain areas where you made some adjustments. So it was felt from a public understanding, it was better to start with the model ordinance and then make whatever adjustments we thought were necessary. So when we actually talk through some of the elements, we did remove definitions and regulations that don't apply because you don't even have those land uses within your community, things like animal feedlot, mining, forest. So those did go. We also did not retain definitions that were duplicative of other areas in the code, trying to reduce the potential for problems by having slight differences. When we needed to, we did make adjustments and had those approved by the DNR. So if you had a definition that the city staff and the planning commission felt you should retain, we did have conversations with them about retaining those. A couple of things that we did retain, which are above and beyond, the model ordinance is retaining a bluff impact zone of 30 feet. It is smaller in the model ordinance. And also, the single-family minimum lot width of 85 feet for a general development lake, I think it's 75 feet in the model ordinance, those were felt as positives and things that the planning commission recommended that they be retained. One element of negotiation is always retaining the things that you like and also are a positive so that we can offset those by things that we want to adjust. So those were felt to be things that were valuable to the planning commission as things to retain. So there are higher parts than your standards. We did change, the impervious surface is now limited to 25% instead of 30%. It also, one particular change was eliminating the ability of property owners to exceed that 25% by directing water runoff to a city-approved facility, and that's an area. So previously, if you had a stormwater pond that was nearby, you might be able to go above that number because you were going to go directly into that pond. So that is a change that is reducing folks' ability to have impervious surface coverages. We also reduced the landings for stairways from 48 square feet to 32 square feet. There are a couple of additional regulations for accessory dwelling units. You do have regulations already, so if you notice in the code, it references those. The DNR did want too specific to be added. They call them guest cottages, just in case you ever went to look out, they don't use the same term. They asked that we require minimum lot sizes to be the same as what would be required for a duplex. And so it depends, this 24,000 square feet, that would be for a riparian lot. If you are farther inland and a non-riparian, you're what the underlying zoning would require for a duplex. So it's not a set number, just like everything else, it varies by where you are relative to the shoreline. And then we have kind of the general statement that you need to reduce the visibility, which is always a little interesting, just where one would put an ADU if you're an actual riparian lot, but this is trying to make sure that's taken into consideration. One other addition that again was something that the DNR recommended and the planning commission felt was, could be appropriate, is that we'd actually have some standards that would, standard conditions that would apply if someone sought a variance. So variance to shoreline setbacks generally says that either you are asking for a reduction in the shoreline setback standard, or you're asking for a higher impervious surface coverage. These are the standards that you would have to meet. One is trying to protect the shoreline more by converting the shoreline into native or native plants. So 20 feet or 20% of contiguous shoreline to a depth of 10 feet would need to be converted. That's one of the things that the DNR is very, very interested in, is what you can do to protect the shoreline more. And so the restoration from a manicured lawn to more native plants is something they're particularly interested in. In order to do that, staff was more confident that we should require a planting plan and some type of conservation easement or mechanism for it to be insured into perpetuity. So the last two bullets are really from a staff perspective of how do we even enforce this idea? This was again seen by the DNR as a positive to kind of counter some of the things where we wanted to pull back a little bit from the regulations. This is something that they've really wanted to see, and they haven't seen in a lot of shoreline regulations, so they noted in their response, their preliminary review, that they felt that it was very much a positive that you included this in your regulations. And then there were some regulations that we had worked with engineering to move into Title 8 Public Works. Previously, this district included regulations for shoreline as well as stormwater and wetland protection. In reality, the shoreline part is really administered from the planning department's perspective. Stormwater and wetland protection is really administered by engineering, so it was thought more appropriate to move things into their rightful titles so that the different departments would be able to oversee those. So there is a slight revision to Chapter 803 Stormwater Drainage. So that's taking language about stormwater management, things from the model ordinance and existing language, and that includes any land within 100 feet of a stormwater pond or a wetland. And then a new wetland protection district, and this was something that the engineering really would like, is to have a wetland protection district that has provisions that are based on the Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District. So that existing standards that they have were reviewed, and the sections that they thought were really applicable were recommended to be included into a wetland buffer. So those are some changes that'll happen as part of Title 8 Public Works, which you will consider, but it is separate than Title 10 zoning. So, and that is something that the DNR did know about and was fine with, extracting those and making those changes into those provisions as well.
Maybe if we could stop at that point and deal with any questions or thoughts related to the shoreline, just to kind of help break up the conversation, and since we've all got it on our mind right now, if that's okay.
Sure, yeah, definitely. I'd rather do it right away while it's fresh.
Very good. I know people are chanting it a bit probably to hear about the EB side of it too, so we won't unnecessarily delay that, but wanted to, while we're thinking about shoreline, if councilmembers have questions on shoreline, Councilmember.
I wanted to ask a few questions, please. On the last part you're talking about, stormwater management overlay, would the rules for that, those properties 100 feet from the stormwater ponds be essentially the same as what we're seeing in the overlay district? You say you're using Ramsey-Washington rules. I'm just wondering, what rules would apply to those properties that are within 100 feet of stormwater ponds or wetlands?
Those are rules regarding buffers of wetlands and what you can do within those areas.
Around the buffer, not as much impervious surface, for example?
I'm trying to remember exactly what it said in it. No, because the impervious surface is managed through the shoreline as well as through the stormwater, but I'd have to double-check on that. I apologize, because I don't have it easily in front of me. And, yep, I know, Janice is probably looking it up because we've been exchanging emails about it.
She's great.
So if we can answer other questions, we can circle back.
Ask the question while she's doing that research. One of the things you point out is, hey, here's a specific, if someone's seeking a variance to a shoreline setback, something like that, then they would need to do this 20%, whatever, right? It's very specific, but would that depend on the size of the variance? Because a different variance might have a larger impact. For example, can we be 10 feet closer to the shoreline versus 40 feet closer? And then would the repair for that, that 20% change depending on the impact potentially? Are we setting a minimum standard or the only standard? Would it shift? That's what I'm wondering about that.
So this is the, how I would interpret it, and staff can correct me, is that this is the minimum standard that you're saying is the threshold that you need to apply if you're going to ask for setbacks or an impervious surface. There's always an opportunity with conditions for variances to adjust those conditions based on the magnitude. So it's not setting a threshold from my perspective, but I also don't know how you've been handling variances, which I don't think you have very often. So it would be something that you would look at, and the planning commission and the council would have the purview to add additional conditions if you would like. But these are the ones that we want to start with, and that would be something that the DNR is expecting. That would be the starting point for that discussion.
And I would just add, the DNR would be sort of a review party associated with that variance application. So depending on what maybe got negotiated between the property owner, the planning commissioner, the variance board, and the city council, the DNR gets to weigh in on that as well. So it would be part, their comment would be part of that process.
Is it worth delineating this would be a minimum expectation of a variance? I understand your point that any time of a variance, we have a lot of authority to do more, but setting it as, describing it as a minimum adjustment for a variance or something like that, but one of the concerns would be, hey, you get down the road 10 years and someone says, oh, well, it says that, but this is only 5 feet, so we can do less of a repair on the shoreline, or less of a buffer on the shoreline, for example, but we set this as a bottom, and it can go up from there if the council and DNR feel it is more impactful, or staff think it's more impactful and needs more of a buffer to help with that environmental impact.
Off the cuff, I think it could go either way, whatever you would think would be appropriate. The language would need to be changed to adjust to that. I'm debating in my head the merits, one way or the other circumstance. It's just like a good planner does, where you're like, wow.
Let's not worry about that perfectly tonight, but something to think about.
Yes, yes.
It seems on the surface to make sense to set that as a minimum requirement for any.
It does, I know, but you know planners. We always get nervous, like, oh, but.
So we would appreciate the feedback that might tell us how long we are about.
Yeah, I think we need to think about it and say.
That's fine.
But yes, in general, the concept makes sense to me. It's just that planner and me who want to make sure we think through any potential hiccups of doing that.
Councilmember.
The last one, on the map of water bodies, there are some water bodies that are clearly not lakes and are more in the ditch category. There are a few of them that are named in the city of Roseville, people don't want to call the ditch, but are. But there are a few that are not buffered on this. Is there a reason, is a certain acreage or number of, size of a water body before it counts for this regulation?
Well, the.
For example, south and east of Lake Josephine there, there's a wetland there, this looks like water, but it's really more of a wetland. Is that, does that not count for this? There are a few other water bodies of at least moderate size that are not happening, for example, in the northwest triangle of Roseville, and didn't know where we were drawing our lines for that.
Probably the simple answer is that the main bodies of water are designated by the DNR.
Yep.
And it's those, so they named them, so we have, and then the other ones are designated by the city, and I'm imagining that the only ones we show are the ones that the city has actually designated, so.
These are historically designated, we did not make a change relative to.
You didn't propose to add new ones.
We did not add new ones, though there were some water bodies converted that used to be city-designated that, and since the time it was originally done, they have become DNR-named, but we did not add any at the city level that I'm aware of.
So the city ones are the blue outlined ones.
Correct, Oasis Ponds, Zimmerman, Willow.
And those are the only ones we have historically designated as city-designated public waters.
That are not included in the DNR list but would be under our ordinance.
Right, and they don't qualify under the Chapter 8 wetlands-type designation, which is a whole other thing.
Yeah, these are ones that.
They're only under the shoreline.
Well, these are qualified under the shoreline, they probably qualify under Title 8 in some capacity, depending on their role within the system.
City engineer, public works director, Jesse Fryham, are here to straighten the seller.
So I will just add, I think all the ones, other ones you guys have mentioned, and we could certainly do more research, but I think all the other ones would really fall under the wetland. These are the ones that are more open bodies, so more under a lake, so the other ones would more be under the wetland part of the ordinance.
Okay, that's the designation, appreciate that. Sorry to create a lot of excitement. Well, actually, I like excitement.
And Jesse, can you hold on a second? Sorry.
That's all right.
I want to go back to Councilmember Ratten's original question about the impervious surface and if there's this, under the stormwater stuff that we're moving to Title 8. I pulled up the document that we prepared a while ago in connection with engineering about what we're moving out into Title 8, and I do believe the impervious surface limitations are included in those regulations as well at 25%. They're consistent. The difference is, under the stuff we're moving to Title 8, someone would have the ability to go up to 30% if they direct that additional hard surface to, what's the wording we use, like an onsite or regional stormwater ponding retention facility designed to accommodate increased runoff prior to discharge from the site. So is that, is that correct, and does that answer, I think, the question you potentially had?
That's the kind of nuance that I was trying to understand, what was there that would be in the different sections based on the different types of water.
And I think part of the problem now with it being in the shoreline overlay district is the DNR is not okay with going up to the 30%. So by moving it out into Title 8, that option still exists for the situations where it applies, it's the wetland situation but not the shoreline situation.
And in the shoreline, previously, we had it applying across the board, that anybody in those, could go up to 30% with those BMPs or whatever.
And that's why that one resident is concerned, because they were able to utilize it and are still today with our current shoreline ordinance in place, but won't be able to once we move to the updated model.
In the updated ordinance, would that not be a pre-existing condition, and as long as they made no changes, it would be essentially grand-parented in?
Yes, but that's not what this person wants to do.
They do want to make changes.
They're remodeling.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to understand that. Councilmember Ratten, your.
I've said plenty.
Okay. Councilmember Schroeder.
Well, you know, actually, Jason hit on a bunch of the things I wanted to ask, and the only other thing I had was, again, back on the same concept, but we're talking about the greater of 20 feet or 20% if you wanted to put in natural plants that are consistent with the natural cover of the shoreline. Well, let me tell you, some of the lakes, the natural cover of the shoreline is kind of crappy stuff. And so, I mean, so I'm kind of curious, is it natural cover of the shoreline, or will it be an upgraded natural plant plot? I mean, what are we looking at here that you'd have to do?
I mean, my, the wording is always kind of challenging when you're trying to do it. The intention is, is that. The intention is, is that you're looking for plants, vegetation, that is not manicured lawn all the way up to the shore and not beach all the way up, or sand or rocks. So it's some type of plant material that will be protective of the shoreline, not be erodible, those kinds of things. So it does say which are consistent with the natural cover of the shoreline. That's matching wording that the DNR has other places.
Right.
But what you're trying to get at is it's not manicured lawn all the way up, or as I said, a beach or something.
So basically, you, so native plants or natural coverage?
Well, it's restored with trees, shrubs, or low ground cover, which are native plants of some sort.
So native plants, meaning that are already there or native to Minnesota?
Native to the area.
Okay, because there's a lot of invasive stuff around the lakes, too. So that's, that's why...
Right. But this is one where they're going to be restoring, so they will be installing new. That's the intention. It's not that it's like, we're just going to leave this.
Sure, you can, you can buy really high-end, expensive native plants, or you could bring in some kind of...
Mill foil.
Yeah.
Right, but that's one of the reasons...
About Creepin' Charlie, you know?
That's one of the reasons we added the other two, where they have to create a planting plan. It's not just that they agree to it, it's you have to actually tell us what you're going to put in it so that we can make sure that they are appropriate and that you're not bringing in something that's an invasive or that really doesn't even make sense for that shoreline. That's the reason for the second and the third bullets, is to really make sure it's done right. And if someone's asking for a variance, which isn't that common, is my understanding, you're asking them to move to the next standard, because they're getting a relief from what everybody else has to do, so it's kind of the trade-off. If you really want and really need that variance, then that's the trade-off that you have to do, is spend a little more money and time.
It just was confusing when you said consistent, you know, because like I said, some of the consistency around some of the lakes, because for a while, they actually came out years ago with programs to try to encourage people to get rid of the naturally covering that's around the shorelines with new stuff first. So that's why I was confused. It was, it's not really clear how that's worded, I guess.
We can look at that again. I know that that was a section that was tough to write in some respects, because you're trying to get across the idea without actually saying...
Don't get me wrong, I do like the native plant idea, absolutely.
Yeah, no, I'm hearing that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just didn't think I could put no manicured lawn or beaches. I kind of had the positive route.
All right, thank you.
But if you have suggestions, I'm all ears.
Potential language might be consistent with appropriate natural cover of the shoreline or something like that.
There you go, there you go.
Because you don't, you don't want it to sound like appropriate with the existing natural cover.
Right.
Because that's, that's a whole different standard, so...
Yes, yes, that would be the way to do that.
Something along those things. Councilmember Strong.
Do we know how many people this would impact that would be, put in a new code? How many people would be out of compliance with it based on what's already happening in their yard or, you know, along their shoreline areas based on the new recommendations?
Are you specific to this provision or something else?
Just the shoreline in general, since there was many different sub, you know, ADUs and other things along there. Do we know, will there be a lot of people who will be grandparented in with previous things?
So Councilmember Strong, there are so many different factors that we could look at to determine who would be out of compliance. We don't have a lot of ADUs, so I'm not really concerned about that. We don't have a ton of situations where people exceed hard surface requirements. It would be grandfathered in once we go to the new model ordinance. I don't know if there are others. I mean, we've got...
We did identify lot sizes, but that, I mean, when we were looking at the analysis, but it wasn't, those are existing conditions also to your just, your code. They're not, because one advantage that we were able to do that maybe I didn't call out, that's good to know, is that this code establishes that all of the underlying zoning restrictions or zoning lot size and widths for non-riparian lots go to your code. So whatever you have in your normal district, and that's one benefit of this approach, is that we were able to only focus on the riparian and not have to deal with all of the non-riparian elements, which would have normally been, there would have been different lot size requirements. And so we were able to use the underlying. And I think that's a real positive, because it makes things a lot easier, even over time as you make adjustments. We don't always have to worry that we're going to put all these lots that are within 1,000 feet but aren't on the lake and have them be affected.
And there's really no way to avoid that process. I mean, if we want to go to the new model ordinance, that's the process we're going to have to live with, with the DNR.
Thanks.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, in moving some of this to Title Eight, are we putting potentially some zoning type requirements outside of our zoning code? Is there any concern about that? Or, I just want to make sure that if we call it a district, for instance, that we're, now we've got this zoning-esque thing that's outside the zoning code. That would be my only concern with what we're doing here, and I just want to make sure that maybe we, we use correct terminology so that we don't create additional confusion with people, because it's, when people look to our zoning code, they look to Chapter 10. You know, they don't want to be starting to have to look elsewhere. So, not that there aren't other requirements elsewhere in the code, obviously, but just want to make sure we're not sticking some zoning type stuff in a different part of the code.
It's an interesting question, and obviously you may have an opinion. My one comment is, I believe everything that's moving is stuff that they were already administering. And so it's not like we created new stuff, other than what was desired to be created new, but it is an interesting point that we're using a term.
So there aren't like lot width or lot size requirements or those types of things that are different in that stuff we're moving to Chapter Eight, right?
The only, obviously, the impervious surface part. And we have the building height, but we took out elements that we didn't need to have anymore. It's my...
Yeah, I think the majority of it is what we, what Public Works has administered, and I think the big key was, is impervious surface and then really the wetland buffers. That's really the key thing. Now, I, to your point, I mean, it, maybe it is a little more confusing, residents might have to look in two spots, but I guess it is also confusing when we apply it, where it comes from, so I can, I can see both ways, certainly.
It may just be something where in our zoning code, we might want to provide a reference to potential buffer areas that are in Chapter Eight, in appropriate portions of our zoning code, so that people have the knowledge that they may have to check that if they happen to be within 100 feet of a wetland or something like that.
So one thing we did think of potentially, I think we called it out here as like 803, it might be beneficial to do like 804, a whole separate section, especially for the wetland part, to potentially even make it stick out a little more so it isn't buried with the rest of the stormwater. That was one thing we had talked internally possibly doing.
I think that makes, makes a lot of sense. So just some thoughtfulness about how we make sure people know where to find the stuff and that we're not putting standards outside the zoning code that are actually supposed to be zoning type standards. That's, that's my main 30,000-foot comment, so.
And I was just scrolling through the stormwater and wetland language, and I don't see anything related to use or lot area or lot width or any of that. The one thing is the ability to go up to 30% impervious surface, but there's a stormwater permit associated with that, which is why it sort of belongs there.
Right.
But you will see that as a different ordinance coming back once we sort of wrap this up.
So it may make sense from just a text amendment point of view to wherever we talk about impervious surface in the zoning code, to just make a note that you may want to check if you, if you're close to a wetland, that there may be other requirements or something like that, you know? Just something to think about. I don't want to add a bunch of language to the code right now, just on the fly, but just to help people understand that, that aspect of it and how they can use the code without being confused. So my final thing in the shoreline area was, there were a number of definitions that, like for PUD and residential PUD and conditional use and variance, that were in the shoreline ordinance as definitions, which I think are already defined elsewhere in our code and seemed also to be, in the case of the PUD and residential PUD, seemed to be very duplicative of each other. And I don't want, once again, take things out that shouldn't be in there or that should be in there, but at the same time, I don't want our code to be full of two different definitions of the same thing. So I just want to make sure, I know you had mentioned that there was an effort specifically to make sure we didn't have definitions in the shoreline ordinance that were already in the rest of the code, but I did specifically see a PUD definition, which talked about very much residential type things, and then separate from that was a residential PUD definition, like a couple lines down or up, and I couldn't tell what the difference between those was or where they were used. And then, once again, conditional use and variance, which are also dealt with elsewhere in our code, so probably not going to find it right away if I try to scroll the document here, but, once again, just to point out and to take a second look at it, not so much to, to extensive discussion this evening about it.
I will take a look at that. There are definitions that you would have thought would have been in the general, definitions that actually do not show up in the general definitions.
Okay.
So that may be why some of those terms actually show up here, even though...
Right, we may have to make a decision as to where they really belong, maybe is a way to look at it, because usually when, in specific chapters, we try to keep the definitions very specific to that chapter.
Right.
If it's language that's used elsewhere in the code, we try not to bury the definition in one chapter that may not be relevant to somebody. So just want to, like I said, general comment, I didn't want to get into a lot of detail about that. Other thoughts from councilmembers or questions? All right, are we prepared to move into, are we prepared to charge into electric vehicle discussion?
That was my joke. Move on. All right, so, as you know, electric vehicle charging stations are new to the ordinance. We did look at precedent ordinances in other cities. It's an emerging area, but in Minnesota, I think we looked at about eight different cities that had ordinances and ordinance related to EV, and they were, there's a range of ways that they're being approached right now. Let's see, it's in the parking and loading chapter, and it's in the same section as the minimum parking spaces requirements, which is what we saw in other ordinances that seems like a good place to put it. I'm sure there's other places that it could go, but that's where we're recommending it go for right now. They're required for both, both new parking areas and existing parking areas if they have 30 or more parking spaces, so not, not smaller parking lots. And for existing parking areas, it's, it doesn't kick in unless there's more than 25% or 25% or more parking spaces being added to the existing lot or more than 25% of the parking areas being improved. So we did hear from the planning commission as we were going through this, you know, not being burdensome on smaller businesses and smaller developments. So we tried to honor that. So for multifamily dwelling units or buildings, the minimums are, again, 30 and higher, so 30 to 49, the requirement is to have 5% of the required parking spaces to have a charging station, Level 1. And then if you have 50 plus, then that Level 1 station requirement goes up to 10% and then also adds a 1 Level 2 station. And, you know, the, kind of the difference of those, if you don't know those, Level 2 stations, it gets to charge about 50% faster than the Level 1. Any of us in our house probably could have the Level 1, I guess. Non-residential, similar, 30 to 49 spaces, if that's what you have, then it's just a requirement of 1 Level 2 station, and if it's more than 50 or 50 plus, sorry, then it's 1% of the required parking spaces, and that can be either a Level 2 DC charging station is a Level 3. So, you know, if you want to provide an even better one, which I think those take like 30 minutes to charge a car up, so you can put that in if you want. For all developments, both residential and non-residential, handicap spaces, it's required to have one space that has a charging station, and then 10% of the required spaces must have electric capacity installed for future stations at the Level 2. Non-residential, another requirement is that any gas station or fuel, motor fuel sales development needs to have one charging station, and that could be a Level 2 or a Level 3. Some exceptions, I guess, reductions for EV charging, if the cost is higher than 5% of the total project cost, then it, it could be waived. Excuse me. The equipment, these are standards, I guess, so anybody that is putting these in, the equipment cannot block pedestrian movement areas or create trips hazards on sidewalks, can encroach into the required dimensions of the parking space that are in the code. And then, similar to the shoreline, there are definitions that are in the packet that are being put into the definitions section of the code. I think there's about 11 of them. And, let's see, that's it for EV. So I don't know if you want to talk about the EV before we do the other one?
It might be appropriate.
Okay.
Just based on the subject matter. Feedback or questions from councilmembers on the EV portion of it? Councilmember Ratten?
Thanks for doing this. I think this is an important move forward for us. So, this is good, I talked to Ms. Gunnlock about the definition improved, when you talk about more than 25% of the parking area improved, and I believe that's now referenced to another part of our code.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that, because I know that was a question that came up with the planning commission. Would this apply, we're talking about non-residential, apply to all other uses? So institutional, let's say that Roseville High School redoes more than 25% of the parking lot, would this apply to Roseville High School?
The way it's written, I believe, so.
Okay.
All not. Residential and non-residential would include everything, yes.
Okay. And when we look at the handicap thing, it says access to one, sometimes these come with like two sides to them, essentially you can plug in one this way. Is that what we're talking about? Would necessarily be dedicated right in front of a single handicap stall, but could be split in a difference?
Right.
I wonder about that in the sense that if you're required to have one EV charger in your whole lot and it has to be in front of the handicap spot, then that means no one else can get to that, right? No one else can park there. The majority of users would not be able to get to it. So thinking about what that access means and how, how they, I don't, I don't plug in my car, I got high rev, I don't have a plug-in, right? So I don't know how that adds up to how access works when we're talking about this, but I want to make sure that we don't require one and then it's only a handicap spot and no one else can use it.
Councilmember Ratten, that certainly wasn't our intent as we were discussing this. We originally were discussing it as the 5 or the 10% requirement, and then, oh, but what about handicap as well? Let's make sure that we have access for handicaps. So we'd have to look at how we worded it, but the intention was not to just have one handicap stall be the sole requirement to fulfill this ordinance on a specific use, if the math works out where they only need one stall.
Yeah, let's say you have 35 parking spots and you redo your lot, you're going to be required to have one EV charger, but it has to be for the other, the next level down in the requirement, it has to be for the handicap spot. Now, the other, you know, 29 people who don't have, or whatever, don't have a handicap sticker or license plate can't get to that unless we think about how we arrange that charging station.
I think that's...
And I don't know, I don't know how the charging stations work, right? So I'm, I'm not very helpful in exactly what this would mean, but I want to make sure we're thinking about what this would mean before we would pass it.
I would think it would be handicap accessible, but maybe not marked as just handicap.
I was going to say, because in parking, you, if you're not, don't have a tag or whatever, you can't park legally in a handicap designated spot.
Right.
Whereas, for instance, restrooms, anybody could theoretically use a handicap accessible stall or that kind of thing. So there are different standards, but specific to parking, definitely, if you make a parking spot that is, has the ability to be used by somebody that has, you know, has a hand-operated vehicle or whatever, has van access or whatever, but the general public can still use it, you know, I guess first of all, you know, it's important to make sure that you are providing the ability for it to be used by somebody who has, has those limitations. But on the side, on the other hand, under like ADA and things like that, are we, or parking laws for handicap, are we creating a situation where we've got a spot that somebody who doesn't have, you know, a sticker can use and then precludes somebody that should be able to accept, access it from being able to use it? So I think we need to have more research and figuring out around that area, just, just to add on to what councilmembers had, and then short over talking. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No. When we're looking at the non-residential development minimum requirements, it talks about minimum 30 to 40 parking spots, one Level 2 station, and this might be a percentage thing that's just wrong here, but it says minimum, where minimum number of parking spaces is 50 plus, Level 2 stations at 1% of required parking spaces, which would come out to 0.5 parking spaces.
At 50.
If it, you know, 50 lots times... If it, you know, 50 lots times 1%, would be a half a parking spot. So, I'm wondering if we want to say, it needs to have one plus a percentage, or two plus a, you know, percentage, but right now it's actually less than if you had 49 spots.
If you can figure out how to do half a parking spot.
And I know that wasn't your intention, but right now, the way it is, it is actually lesser. And so I want to think about, I think, at a minimum, I should say one plus percentage, but probably might, it needs to be more than that, to think about how that would impact the total number.
Can I just tag on that? Because I had a thought in that regard as well. We may need to put a standard in our parking code more generally that says that any calculated number of spaces, you have to round up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've got a lot of calculated space requirements elsewhere already in our parking ordinance, so, yeah. That would be a way to get at that, because then at 51, you're not doing a 50, you know, half a spot a car. Councilmember, maybe?
Yeah, one more. Yep. Do we have an idea what it costs to put in a level one versus a level two charging station? When we talk about, hey, it can't be more than 5% of the total project cost, if it costs $15,000 to put in a level two station, what does that mean for the average if someone repaved 50, you know, where does that fall? Are we, is this 5% number going to limit almost anything? Or, I don't know. Again, this is an area I don't know, but I would wonder what it costs to put in a level one and a level two stations, and how that might relate to some ideas we have for, hey, when we did X parking lot, there was that many stalls, it cost us as much. How would that, this 5% total project cost exemption work or not work?
You know, when we had that conversation, we talked really generally about the overall cost, and I don't remember the specifics of the numbers that we used. Was the 5% what we found in precedent for other city codes, or was that something?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The 5% was. We didn't, we didn't look at the specific costs, but I think in general, level two, it's 240 volt versus 120 volt. And I don't think the cost is significantly higher. The level three in the DC charging stations, I think I haven't seen a dollar figure for there, they are substantially higher cost. So that's why in the codes, or in the recommendation, it's level three or DC can be substituted, but the cost is much different than level two, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're thinking about that.
Yeah, we'll check into that.
Thanks.
Councilmember Strong.
I guess I'm just wondering if it's enough. As we look at, I look at the state of California, they're banning gas-powered cars after 2035. I'm not, I don't see anything indicating that we're headed in that direction right now, but even a small incremental step that would, one in a lot of 50 isn't going to be nearly enough, thinking ahead. And obviously, we don't have to plan for it right now, tough melodies will change, but I just, I definitely think we need to round up. But I also wonder, you know, what we can require so that they're actually potentially meeting the need.
Yeah, so we did look at precedents, we looked at eight cities, I think, in Minnesota, so we didn't see ones that were higher, not that we couldn't go higher. And you've probably even seen the press with Minneapolis getting pushed back on actually requiring it. But, yeah, so we haven't seen those numbers yet, but I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, seems like they should be higher. We just haven't seen anybody push it, so we could, if you have suggestions on higher numbers, we could consider that.
And that's also where we looked at actually equipping stalls with charging stations versus having a requirement that the electricity be available to make those stalls ready if there is a demand in the future to do it. And there's a really great balancing act we're trying to accomplish here, and Jeff mentioned the city of Minneapolis, his electrical vehicle charging ordinance being challenged by the state building official, who has said, you cannot do this because it's more restrictive than the building code. And so their ordinance is not being enforced right now because of that determination by the state building official. We are trying to walk a very fine line between what is reasonable, and what the public and what the development community will accept, and not getting into trouble with the state building official. I think in our instance, in Minneapolis, there's a lot of covered parking requirements where that charging station has to be accomplished in what is constituted as a structure or building. We don't have that here in Roseville. You can accomplish all of your parking requirements here in Roseville with surface parking. So I think that gives us a little bit of additional cover that Minneapolis doesn't have. But as we talk about increasing the amount that is required, we run the risk of getting on the state building officials radar for challenging our ordinance as being a violation of the building code because it's a more restrictive standard. So I would just throw that note of caution out there, and we talked about that on the planning, with the planning commission.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Graff?
I just think it's time to do this, obviously, so I think it's really good to get a start. I do agree with councilmember Strong that, you know, in the future, we'll probably need more, but I imagine we can, we'll need to adjust this as we see how it works, and that's something the city council can do, again, in the future. I really like the idea of having this available to rental, people in rentals, because right now, they, someone who is in rental, even if they are very environmentally conscious, are not able to have an EV, and that's a real plus, in my opinion, in what we're doing. So, I think other than that, I appreciated all the other comments that were made. Thanks for all the work.
If I might add, we have also talked to St. Louis Park, they have a really strong ordinance, I would say. And if you're interested, they actually have a dashboard where you can go and see how many EV charging stations have been put into the city, and they're saying approved, completed under construction, something like, looks like 160 level one, 175 level two, and then they even have a number for future stations that are, have the electrical capacity going into the building. So, I mean, at some point, it's going to be the developers wanting to put it in, and they're going to, you know, bypass the requirements, hopefully, so. But it's interesting just to see that they do have the requirement, and they are seeing them be put in, so.
And I just want to add, because I worked with St. Louis Park and some other stuff, and we had talked to them a number of years ago, they also started and then made adjustments. They didn't come out of the gate with what they have today. I know that they made adjustments a couple of years ago, and I think they were contemplating some other adjustments, and obviously, the Minneapolis situation is something that's on everybody's radar, but that kind of goes to the, let's, you know, if you get it in place, then it's easier to make adjustments to something that people are getting familiar with, instead of trying to figure out what the right number is the first time, is sometimes kind of challenging.
I have a couple of questions. One came up just during the discussion, it was mentioned that if the cost exceeds 5%, the requirement is waived, and I guess I'm a little concerned about that. I would much rather have the requirement just then be whatever costs 5% essentially, because I don't want to, I don't want the requirement to simply go away if you, if you cook the books and get your, get it over 5% of your project, you know, or put in all level three chargers, and now suddenly it's over 5% of your project. I mean, it's great that they're putting in level threes, but, you know, at the same time, we don't want people sort of finding ways around the system. I would much rather, you know, at that 5% threshold, there still has to be some kind of requirement that costs 5% of the project, you know, or something like that, you know?
Yeah, so, what's in there is, the property owner or applicant may request the reduction.
Okay.
And they, they are, you know, they need to submit the cost estimates, so.
Got it. Okay, so we have the opportunity to consider that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a request.
Thank you. And then the other thing is just, once again, as in the Shoreland ordinance, trying to get past some of the confusing nature of it, as a layperson trying to interpret it, and I sent an email to Ms. Gunnlock about it earlier, and I'm totally okay that there wasn't a response yet, but the, there's a definition for EVCS, which is a space that is served by an EVSE. There's a definition of an EVSE, which is electrical vehicle supply equipment, charger, I guess. There's also a definition for a battery charging station, which sounds a lot like an EVSE. So I really would like us to take a second look at our, at the language we're using, and then obviously the definitions that go with that, and just make sure we're not creating, first of all, acronyms are something that generally I try to avoid, but I understand when we need to use them, so I'm not totally against that. But when we start having a lot of similarities between things, is there just a way to take the simplicity wand and kind of review this one more time, and just try to, try to synthesize it down to really the essence of what we're trying to say?
So we did talk about it this afternoon, and-
I did respond to the email, it just wasn't until later this afternoon, and we will look at it and simplify it.
Yeah, well, we can refine tune it. In most cases where it says EVSE, which is supply equipment, electric vehicle supply equipment, probably should say EVCS. I think, your understanding of spaces versus equipment, I think that was, that's right. I think most of the time, we should say EVCS instead of EV.
Because we're talking about the number of spaces to be able to do the charging, right?
Yes.
And then the equipment just follows with whatever, how you're setting it up to work.
Yeah, and I do think there's probably some definitions that aren't necessary.
Okay.
So we can clean that up.
Yeah, I just, just wanted to make that note. And then the only other thing was, because of the fact that we talk about that motor vehicles, or motor fuel sales, and how that works, we may want to add into the definition of motor fuel sales that that also includes provision of, you know, a dedicated provision of electric charging, you know, as a business, essentially. I think there's a reference to that in this language.
Yeah.
And I may, I may have just missed it, if it was actually an update to the definitions in this section, but I had, I had gone to the main zoning code to look up the definition of motor fuel sales.
Oh. Are you saying there, there should be a definition for motor?
No, I'm just saying that, that right now, the definition for motor fuel sales in the general zoning code just talks about sale of liquid fuels, like gasoline, basically. I'm just saying, if, if we're talking in this section about a business whose business is to provide charging of electric vehicles, and we're, we're saying that it needs to meet the requirements of motor vehicle sales that are in the general zoning code, which are something to that effect, is what we're saying here, that we should probably, just to close the loop in our definition in the original zoning code, or the main zoning code, just kind of add that piece to it so that that's clear, especially when somebody starts going to look at the use charts and see, you know, well, there isn't anything specifically that says electrical vehicle charging businesses are permitted, that kind of thing. I just want to make sure, once again, that we're making the code user-friendly. And likewise, as we talk about our use tables, we don't have anything specific in our use tables about electrical, electric vehicle charging as a permitted accessory use, or anything like that, that I can think of. I could be totally wrong, because I just kind of skimmed it really quickly, but we want, may want to think about how we reference that in our use tables as well. I know it adds complexity to the work we're doing, but I also want to make sure that it's, once again, friendly for the users that are going to be using this, and future councils and staffs who are trying to, trying to apply the code. So, just a couple of comments along those lines. Anything else on the electric vehicle side of it? All right, I think we can move on.
Okay, the, as far as landscaping and screening, we took out just a couple of different things. One of the things on the, I think it might even come from the council originally, on the list of improvements to the code was to deal with the one tree per dwelling unit requirement, minimum requirement. And so we looked at that, we looked at, again, some precedent ordinances in other cities, we looked at the model landscape ordinance, and the state's model landscape ordinance. And the change we're making is, instead of basing on number of dwelling units, is to go to two trees per 2,000 square feet of open area, or one per 1,000, if you look at it that way, I guess. But we worked with the city forester also to figure out what the best square footage is for that, and so that's how we got to the 2,000. And again, we did look at precedent ordinances as well. So that should address the, I guess, the commonality of having to give variances, because people just could not fit that many trees on a lot, based on dwelling units. And then, the second one relating to landscaping, is we started off by trying to figure out how to, if native vegetation could be a requirement in some way, goes back to the conversation with the Shoreland ordinance in a bit, a bit, but we did not find precedence for that. We looked hard. A lot of cities are dealing with that sort of requirement in their weeds and nuisance chapters or titles. Unfortunately, we were hoping that we, we could do something more assertive with native vegetation, so where we landed was, for now, again, based on, there's not really precedent for this out there yet, is to add these kind of two minor things that relate to, you know, plant materials being appropriate to the zone, hardiness zone, and then, you know, dealing with obnoxious plants or weeds. And that's, that's just based on precedence, so that's where we got to. Hopefully, that will change over time, and there'll be something that, more that can be done with that.
That concludes the landscaping stuff.
Yeah, so those are the two landscaping things, before we talk about the sustainability incentives.
Anything on the landscaping? Oh, Councilmember.
Is the, sorry, the two trees per 2,000 square feet, actually, reduction in the number of trees would expect on a high-density property?
Probably, but I think the individual characteristics of every site, we will have to evaluate it. So, of all the apartment buildings that we've built recently, many of them have had to seek a variance to the tree requirements, and that's just because, once you compare what the zoning code allows you to build in terms of density, it became impractical to install a tree per dwelling unit on these sites. And so the idea was, we'll, we'll make the requirement based on the available open space that is on the site, once you apply the zoning requirements, to get to the density that you're allowed to have. So yes, I think under several circumstances, it will result in a reduction in the amount of trees that have to be constructed on a property for a multifamily project.
And this is outside of our tree preservation requirements, this is just our-
This is just the landscaping standards. The tree preservation requirements are different, and those will remain unchanged.
So, that being said, we've seen in other codes that this minimum trees per dwelling unit is probably just an old ordinance. You know, we've seen in other cities, it just doesn't quite make sense. And so when I referenced the model landscape ordinance, that was developed by the Minnesota Green Step Cities Program, so, you know, that's, that's a best practice in the state. And, you know, the cities we looked at that align with that exactly are Burnsville and Brooklyn Park, but also Minneapolis, New Brighton, Edina have, we looked at those in there, that per square feet rather than per dwelling unit approach. So that's, you know, we feel like it's the right direction.
A similar percentage per square feet?
Yeah.
And to close the loop on your comment about the tree preservation, that's staying unchanged. So if there's a really big tree on the property that has to be torn down to accommodate development, and that is what, you know, blows the required number of trees sort of well above and beyond what the landscaping requirements require, there's the ability to pay per tree that you can't install, so that, that's all staying unchanged.
Thank you.
Just a note that we do, in our own nuisance code, have definitions of native landscaping and some other things, so that's probably more consistent there, it sounds like, with other people. But, but it doesn't get into the same types of details you talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Oh, Councilmember Graff?
Just a note, that the mayor is the weed inspector, so he-
Oh. Thank you, thank you.
All hail.
We defer.
So, part four is, rather than requirements, what we're recommending is that there be a sustainable building, a zoning incentive program. So it's two parts, it's a, it's the incentives, you know, which are things like density bonuses and that sort of thing, and then the features that are provided by the development to achieve those zoning incentives. Again, it's, it's not a requirement, developers can choose this development option. There's a point system that we put into the ordinance, or that would be referred to by the ordinance, and there's points for what kind of features, sustainable building features you put into the development, and then there's points that are needed for the incentives, and so we'll get into that a little bit. There is a potential to also link this incentives to any project that receives public financial assistance, and staff is intending to bring that to the EDA in the future. So this would, this would go into the chapter- So, this would, this would go into the chapter 1011. It's called Property Performance Standards. That's kind of a bigger chapter, but that's where it seems like it would fit. And the worksheet, the detailed worksheet won't be in the code. It's just a short reference to, to the incentives program that would actually be in the zoning code. By doing that, this is an innovative, you know, thing that's happening. We looked, again, at precedents in other cities, and it was really hard to find something exactly like this. So, different cities are doing different things. In a lot of cases, cities are, are doing something like this, but it's not just focused on sustainable, sustainability or sustainable building incentives. Duluth is doing it, but it's not, yeah. Janice is not a fan of it, so.
They're not doing it.
So, you know, if, if you hear about other cities, you, there are other cities that are trying to do things like this. But I think what Roseville is doing is going towards sustainability, targeting it straight on, and doing it in a more comprehensive way.
And, and I don't know, sorry, I'm going to add a couple of comments before we go on. I think this goes back to the whole, you can't require something that's more restrictive than the building code. And so, you know, Jeff made the comment about the city of Duluth has it. Well, but they're requiring things that we would already require, like you have to clean up a brownfield site if you want to redevelop it. Well, is that, are you really, it's not really an incentive, you would have to do it anyway. And so, we're, our incentives component is really looking at trying to encourage meaningful sustainability into new development. And then, in exchange for that, we'll offer an incentive, versus offering an incentive for something you have to do anyway. So, and, again, we can't require it because you can't impose a standard that's more restrictive than the building code.
So, the way we're doing is, the incentives fall into these categories. There's 12, there's actually 12 options if you looked at the worksheet. Excuse me, but they fall into, under density, building intensity, setback exceptions, and then, building design, whether it's articulation, the materials, or window door openings. And then, there's, I think, 16 options for the types of features that developers could put into their buildings, and those fall into these five categories. So, the, the intent was to try to keep the point system as simple as possible. So, that's why it's, you know, simple numbers. We saw things that had points that went up to 50 or 100, and, and then, you, you know, you can debate what counts for 20, and 10, and 15, and all that. We tried, we, we know, again, we saw precedence, and we tried to keep this as simple as we could. In general, a zoning incentive, you know, if you want to get a density bonus, it's probably going to require about two or three sustainable features on that list. And the reason, again, we're doing the worksheets outside of the zoning ordinance is that over time is, you learn more and see what works with, you know, the first projects that come in. It can get updated, but it doesn't require a formal amendment to the zoning code to do that. And then, this is the worksheet for the, the actual incentives. You can see the points and how they're weighted towards things that are, you know, more valuable to developers versus less valuable.
And when we say value, we mean cost and ease in order to implement it. So, I'm sure you have lots of questions on that one. I don't know if you want me to go through the recommendation that we have for you tonight, or if you just want to go back and talk about this.
Why don't we see if there's comments or questions on the worksheet and the incentive program? And then, we can kind of wrap up then with some next steps. Councilmember Ed.
Strange. Thank you. I, I really appreciate your creative approach to this. I think this is an interesting direction. I think there's a lot of good in, in what can come here. Obviously, I'm hesitating. So, one of the things I worry about, some of those pieces that are more valuable to developers, I wonder about, we've had some very specific discussions in recent years about building height, for example. Or, we just had a discussion a half hour ago about impervious surface, right? And these are all pushing out and pushing impact of a development that will impact people around them, and impact green space or impervious surface. So, it's almost in direct contrast to environmental goals, or to some of the things we've done to try to preserve neighborhood situations. And so, part of what I'm wondering about is how those, how we look at those pieces, you know? Putting a solar array on and doing a BMP allows you to, just to give an example here, I think I didn't, maybe I didn't add up right, but could, could you, it's a point where you have this decreased setbacks from front yard setback, at that point, maybe at six things, or pretty soon, you can have a building that's 10 feet taller, or 20% more units in it. So, wondering how those, how these pieces fit together because they almost seem like we're getting one thing and we're giving up almost exactly the opposite thing at the same time. And are we actually getting anything? The other thing I'm wondering about is how this works with, for example, in a high density where people can ask for greater density, would these be stacked on top of that? Or would we have one or the other, in, in that circumstance? Because we just talked about that with one development, and said, hey, okay, 20% more units if you have the setback and this and that. Well, would be 20% for that, and 20% if they met some of these requirements and got to eight points, which would end up being 40%, and much, much different building impact. So, wondering how we, we weigh these things, and then, how this might work with other parts of our development code.
So, it's a good question and something the Planning Commission talked about. And I think the simple answer is, it's what do you value as a community, and how much val, how much incentive do you want to offer in order to get sustainable development? Because right now, we can't require these things. And there's been a lot of pressure and demand by certain groups within the community that we should be doing more for sustainable development. And if we can't legally do it, we need to incentivize it. And what sort of incentive is enough in order to get the development community to do it? Because it does cost more money. And a lot of people say, well, you can't afford not to do it. But the developer who's just building the project and leaving, every thousand dollars does make a difference. And so, we do need to incentivize it. So, the answer to your first question is, it depends on what you value more. Do you value neighbor concerns about setbacks in building height? Yes. Do you value a LEED-certified building enough to sort of give up some of the building height or setback incentives that you're offering? And that's honestly a question for the council to make a decision on. And the, there was a lot of conversation about, well, can this be a conditional use? Where the city council could review each and every one to make a decision. And ultimately, the Planning Commission landed on, the whole reason we're incentivizing it is because there's added costs. And if there's additional added costs to bring the city council in, and it's not a given, it's very unlikely the development community is going to do it anyway. Because it's going to cost them more time to go through the process, and there's no guarantee and a lot of uncertainty associated with it. Regarding the impervious surface thing specifically, I want to note, they have to treat for the additional hard surface they're being given. So, they may be given an incentive to go up to 30 or 35%. They still have to treat for that additional 30 to 35%. So, depending on the specific incentive that's being offered, it may not, you may not be giving up something, depending on what it is. I feel like there was one other question.
How it stacks with some of our other-
And, and they would be able to stack. I, I believe what we've talked about, and you, so you're referring to the structured parking. The, the ordinance already gives you a 20% density bonus if you structure parking. So, that would be stacked on top of the incentives that are offered here.
That's literally a lot of stacking.
That was one of my questions.
And I think we still haven't answered the question as to how we feel about our existing language. Because I think we, there was a lot of concern raised at the time, in terms of the, the fact that the, the bonus grows as soon as you reach the thresholds that kick you up the next, you know? So, I think that's something we're going to have to figure out. And I'm wondering, is this something we roll out as a full-fledged, you know, available-to-everybody zoning code update? Or is this something we maybe take a step back and do as some kind of like pilot? Where we say, you know, if, if we have a couple come in a year, and we can take a look at them and see how they go, we can then determine whether we actually take the step of putting it fully into the code for everybody? Because I think, I think I have a lot of the concern too, as to how it works. And I think, honestly, I don't know that anybody in the room knows exactly how it's going to work. We only, we only can, can imagine, I guess. And so, it may make sense to say, hey, this isn't ready to go out for, to be available to every, every single development that comes in. Maybe there is a way to just, just try to, you know, pilot it in some way, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't know. I could be totally out of left field on that. But it feels safer to do something like that than just open it up to every development possibly. Councilmember.
Yeah, and you were both talking about some of the things I was thinking about. Because I was thinking about that bonus, you know, with the parking lot, and same thing. And be careful what you ask for, because that, that one bonus situation, I didn't feel we really got any bang for a buck in that one. And so, it was almost like he was going to do it anyways, kind of thing. And, yeah, we didn't really get. And so, I'm concerned about, there's so much of it. And, yeah, because it's hard to know how effective it'll be. But I also, we'd really want to make sure when we, I think a pilot program would be easier to roll out, because I think you want to monitor and measure each project to see if this is working or not. And also, and a second question I had was, I assume anytime you want, you have this worksheet outside of the zoning codes, how often would we be thinking about updating it? And I assume then, any updates to it would have to get council approval?
That's the intent.
Okay.
I have no idea how often we'd update it. I think we'd figure out fairly quickly if it's even something developers choose to do, because they're not required to do it.
Have you talked to developers about this project?
We haven't talked to developers specifically about this, about the worksheet that we've developed. But in the research that was provided to the Planning Commission, there was a study that was done between the Center for Energy and Environment in Hennepin County about what cities can do in order to get more sustainable development. And the result, I think that, that whole thing is a part of the Planning Commission's packet material, so we can go and give it to you. But it was incentivize it through zoning. And so, this concept isn't new, and has been recommended. Our, specifically, we didn't bring to the development community.
Councilmember Stroud.
I was just curious, are we required to have that initial bonus that we had discussed a few months ago? You know, when you're saying stacking, this is stacking on top of something that's already, do we have to have that, that incentive that's already in place? Is that a requirement by some state? Or is that something that we could remove and replace with something like this?
You could remove the existing parking density bonus if you wanted to. It's not required to be in there.
I just, I agree with Councilmember Schroeder that, you know, we, that was hard. We felt like we didn't get much out of, we didn't get a lot out of that last situation. And it was like, well, kind of felt like there was no, not a great win for us. This at least would provide an opportunity for us to have greater, you know, access, they would be less, more energy efficient, or they would have some incentive for them to try harder, push harder, to make the building more energy efficient. If we were to do a pilot, is there some type of situation? Like one year, or six months, or two buildings, or, you know, what kind of framework?
I'm not even sure how a pilot would work. I mean, we're already creating a situation where the developer can choose to do it, it's not required, so.
I, I would be concerned about creating a situation where people expect it to be sort of okayed without any controversy, and that we find out it's, you know, it's a terrible setup, and we need to change it, or something like that. And, and, you know, we're caught, we're caught in a bad situation. There, I think, is the, is the concern, that we just want to try to avoid, you know, that we just get applications in, and we're not, we have to act on them because they're, they're in. And, you know, unless we somehow can, can throttle that, I think, is the, is the concern.
I think, I think our interactions with the cities that are trying this is that projects aren't running in the door to try to do this. And so, everybody's experimenting with it. I know St. Louis Park had a density bonus in their mixed-use district. And, you know, it was a new mixed-use district, and after the first one or two developments, they're going back to tweak that ordinance based on what they learned. So, it seems, I mean, the intent with this was that, this is outside the ordinance, that it's pretty easy to update it after the first project, or first two projects come in, and you discover, you know, this doesn't make sense, we should change this one. You could do that.
And we could always repeal a portion of our code if we decide we don't want to use it anymore, too. So, I suppose.
I mean, we can certainly pull the incentives out of the phase two update to the zoning code and reevaluate it through some sort of pilot program. I do want to go back, though, to the comment that we didn't get anything out of the density bonus for parking, because you got covered parking. And our ordinance does not require covered parking for multifamily, which is extremely rare amongst other communities for multifamily. And when you get covered parking for multifamily, you're getting less impervious surface on a property. So, I'd like to push back a little bit, that having that density bonus in place for multifamily does get you something you wouldn't otherwise get if you didn't have it, because it's cheaper to build surface parking than it is to build covered or structured parking. I understand the concern with stacking that density bonus on top of a density bonus you get from this incentives ordinance, but, but it, it does exist to get you something of value.
Yeah, I think the concern, at least my concern in that particular instance, not to spend a lot of time on that one, but primarily, maybe it wasn't that we weren't getting something necessarily, although I might have used that exact language at the time, was that, that it seemed like the bonus kept getting bigger, the more you, you know, there was, there was like a snowballing effect almost in terms of how it was analyzed. And so, I think if it, I think the issue there was just that the bonus applies to the base standard and then stops growing because of other factors. I think then, we might be more comfortable with it. I think it was kind of where I was arriving at, at that point. So, it just seemed like the bonus kept growing and growing. So, we just have to, we just have to take another look at that, I think. Councilmember.
I think it's worth saying that the, these incentives should be looked at separately from these other updates, and put them in context with some of these other concerns. And whether they stack or don't, or one of my thoughts is, limit the number of incentives that they could get total, or, you know, different, different things that are, or tweaks and points. I have some questions about some of the incentives in the worksheet and how they would work out. But I think it would be better just to have the discussion, again, but outside of this context, and in context of some of our other things that we have in place that these concerns are coming up. That'd be good, good to discuss separately.
I think that makes sense.
Yep.
So, I think we, we potentially can move forward on, on everything but this part of it in one fashion or another, with some, with it obviously coming back after our feedback tonight. And then, this one is going to involve some more discussion, I think.
Yes.
Figuring it out. And, and, you know, it may help to have some examples or that sort of thing as well, you know? Just to visualize, not visualize it, but see how it works, you know? So, does that make sense? Next slide?
So, the recommendation for you tonight was to receive the presentation, which you did, discuss the proposed amendments, which we did, provide feedback to us. We do have some feedback that we will go back and implement for shoreline EV charging and landscaping definitions. We'll bring that back at a future meeting. It probably won't be until the last meeting in February at the earliest, because we got to bring back the Title VIII stuff, and engineering needs some time to do that. Plus, we need to meet the 10-day ordinance publication piece. So, it'd be the last meeting in February at the earliest. And then, you can't see it on this slide, but we'll pull out the incentives piece from what we bring back, and we'll have that conversation at a later date.
Yeah, it's all, it may have to be like a work, work session type, you know, where we can just spend a lot of time on that topic. Great. All right?
Okay.
Very good. So I think we'll look forward to those other items coming back then, in that, that rough timeframe, late February, early March, and we'll go from there. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Next again.
Thank you.
And thanks to the work on the Planning Commission, too. I know they had several meetings.
A lot of meetings.
And a lot of discussions about this, so we appreciate that input as well. All right, that concludes our business items. We don't have any council direction on Councilmember-initiated items, so meeting minutes is our next item. We've got one set of minutes from our January 9th meeting. We've had a chance to review those and provide feedback, and we've got an updated draft provided to us for consideration this evening. Any additional changes or corrections from a council perspective, or a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved to approve?
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroeder, second by Councilmember Graff, to approve the minutes of January 9th as presented. A discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And so 4-0, with one extension from Councilmember Strawn, who wasn't, was unfortunately unable to do that. All right, that then brings us to the consent agenda. The remaining items are A through D, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgen for a review of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a shortened consent agenda. The last three items were taken off earlier in the evening. So Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $627,434.49. Item 10B approves a temporary liquor permit, liquor license, liquor permit, I should say, for Ben Foster Lee for an event on March 17th, and also approves a temporary gambling permit for Whitetails Unlimited Twin Cities Chapter for an event at the Doubletree Hotel on March 11th. Item 10C approves the purchase of equipment for the Public Works Department and the city's bulk fuel purchase. Then finally, Item 10D receives a city grant application update for 2022. The city received a total of $679,120. In '23, so far, we've received $300,000 in grant awards. That is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Is there a motion on the consent agenda items?
Still moved. Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Strawn, second by Councilmember Schroeder, to approve the consent items A through D. A discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That then brings us to future agenda review, communications reports, announcements, et cetera. I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgen again to review the upcoming agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. February 13th, we have the new NYFS president, Angela Louis DeMello, coming and just talking a little bit about the organization and introduce herself. We do have, I believe it's one presumptive penalty for tobacco violation and four for alcohol, and then we also have the Lake Owasso Waterski Slalom, of course, permit request. We do have some consent agenda items as well, so fairly light meeting, even though those are some very important topics. 24th is a little bit more filled up. We do have a proclamation for Romans Histories Month. We do have Nine North Executive Director Jeff Ongsted coming forward here, just to introduce himself and give a quick update on Nine North. We'll be receiving an update on the city's equity work. We're also, as part of that, as a separate case, receive a city workforce report, kind of the demographics that we've been working on. Also look to word the contract for the compensation and classification study. We'll see if we get that all in, and it's ready to go, but that's a tentative date. Then there's two items that I have tentative right now, the Fence Consortium, Joint Powers Authority, I did send the council some information about that. And then the possibility of massage therapy code amendments is something we've been working on behind the scenes here for a little while, and just finding the right spots. We have the appropriate amount of time on there, so we're still kind of working behind the scenes, but right now, we'll tentatively put that down on the February 24th meeting. And that's what I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Questions on the future agenda, or other comments, reports, announcements from council members? Future agenda items? All right. If there are none, the only thing left on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Eton to adjourn. No discussion on the motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we adjourn at 9:14. Thank you, everyone.